Welcome everyone out to our Leighton City Council meeting this evening for April 10th. We appreciate everyone's patience and understanding and knowing that we as a governing body only had one meeting this month, so we felt like it was appropriate to kind of split it and make sure that we were able to accommodate everyone's schedule here. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And as tradition, we like to take turns and share the opening exercise portion of this meeting amongst the council members and myself. And so this month, it is Councilmember Bettina Smith Edmondson's turn to go ahead and lead us in the prayer and pledge. So I'm going to turn the time over to her.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to do the prayer. And because someone decided they wanted to come to the council meeting with me today, I'm going to ask my daughter if she will help lead us in the pledge. So we'll bow your heads with me. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your kindness. God, we thank you for the warm weather that you've allowed us to have on this week. And we just thank you for your mercy. But I ask that you look on us tonight as we have this council meeting, that we operate in the way that would be pleasing to you, and that we are able to hear all of the agenda items and the concerns that are placed before us. That'd give us wisdom and direction in how we operate. I pray that everyone, under the sound of my voice, will be blessed by your presence. We thank you for all the folks that we have in the city who help make it run smoothly and who allow us to enjoy all of the blessings that you give us. So I ask that you would just be with us on this evening, not only tonight, but also in the days and years to come, and help us to do all the things that we need to do on tonight according to your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
So, Ameris, if you would please come to the podium. I'll help you.
Come on.
Please recite the pledge with me.
Please recite the pledge with me.
Start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thanks. I have to say, I love that, the fact that we are educating our youth at such a young age here, and to know that, you know, we're not scary here. This is the purpose of the government, and being able to hear from all ages. So, I would now like to go on to our municipal announcements at this time. So, council, if any of you have any municipal announcements you'd like to share, please go ahead and let us, let it be known. Excuse me? Oh. Yeah, excuse, no, we haven't, yes, I'm sorry. We do have one set of minutes. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Roberts, for correcting me on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the Leighton City Council work meeting, January 16, 2025.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes as written for the January 16, 2025 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Now we can go on to our municipal announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, for the Parks and Recreation Department, we've got an activity just in a couple of days, celebrating Easter at Surf and Swim will be the Surf and Swim Egg Dive. So, children 14 and under, I believe there's opportunities for them to participate. I looked this afternoon, and there's still a handful of opportunities still. It'll be open until signups or all the opportunities are full. So, go to leitencity.org in the Recreation tab and look for Open Registrations, and you'll find the egg dive. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, excellent. Anyone else have any announcements they need to make at this time? Okay, seeing that there's no more announcements, I'll move on to a verbal petition. And we have one tonight that has to do with financial literacy. So I'll go ahead and read that. It says, whereas, Leighton City encourages its residents to be energized and engaged in growing our economy while improving our community. And whereas, the city also sees that the greater understanding and familiarity with financial markets will lead to an increased economic activity and growth. And whereas, improving financial literacy empowers people to make better informed everyday money decisions so that they can live a quality life without living, without outliving their wealth and passing on their values, knowledge and assets to future generations to make their lives and this world a better place. And whereas, financial education has been linked to improve lifestyles, lower delinquency rates for borrowers, higher participation and contribution rates in retirement plans, improved spending and saving habits, improved risk management, higher net worth, and positive knowledge, attitudes, and behavior changes. And whereas, this proclamation encourages citizens to carefully consider financial planning to build and preserve assets over a lifetime for the benefits of the family, friends, heirs, and nonprofits. And whereas, during the month of April, the Financial Awareness Foundation of the city encourages governmental agencies, education institutions, financial service industries, consumer groups, nonprofits, employers, and the news media to join together in a personal financial content media blitz through sharing articles, workshops, and seminars, webinars, and other innovative activities that will educate and empower all to make wise, informed, lifelong financial decisions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Joy Petro, Mayor of Leighton City, along with the Leighton City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Financial Literacy Month in Leighton City. Further, we encourage all residents of all ages to learn the essential principles of smart money management and to get and keep your financial house in order with a current financial plan. Careful financial planning is necessary, not just for your peace of mind, but to give you and your families the best possible possibilities to reach and maintain your financial goals and dreams. So, thank you. Normally, I would give this proclamation to the gentleman that has requested that, but he is in another meeting, so he could not join us tonight. Okay, now what I'd like to do is, according to our agenda, we have our citizens' comment portion of our meeting. This portion of our meeting is where residents of the city is welcome to stand up and address the governing body, share your concerns with us. Typically, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue, and, but certainly, we take notes, and we really want to make sure we hear all of you. I know that, given the past few weeks, there's a different, there's an unusual circumstance that has risen, has arisen, excuse me, and I know that we have a lot of concerns in one particular area. And just to show respect for anyone who is here that might want to speak to this governing body regarding the waste management situation, or otherwise known as the landfill, typically, I don't do this, but would you mind raising your hand so we have, so I have a good pulse on how many are here for that one particular That's all? Okay. Yeah. Okay. So with that, then, I'll explain what I was gonna do. I was considering having a separate di, uh, public hearing after our main business, knowing that I did not want to just have a lot of people have to wait through what I want to make sure, and this governing body, the council, wants to make sure that we give everybody ample time. So knowing that there isn't that many on that one particular item, I'm just going to go ahead and proceed as normal, and would like to now open up the time for our citizens' comment portion of this meeting. However, if you do have a comment on the public hearing, please wait until the public hearing to comment. If you're here on any of the consent items on this agenda, now is the time we need to hear from you as well. So, the time is now Okay, I probably ought to also make it clear, you're welcome to come up, that anybody here on the Hobbs Creek issue, that is a public hearing. So you will be given time then to speak on that separately than this time right now. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Shepherd. I'm at 344 North Thurston Lane. I am here today to go on record once again in petition for a dog park. I, we have had a representative, one or more, at the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings every single month for the last nine months. And while they are receptive, we keep getting repeatedly told that a dog park is not a priority. And so, I am here because it is you guys that are able to shift the priorities in Leighton. A little bit of a review, back in 2020, all systems were ahead for a dog park at a parcel in the IHC vicinity, and that didn't come to fruition. But at the time, there were two other locations that were seriously considered as well, the Mutton Hollow Detention Basin and the Power Park located just west of Ellison Park. I am a little disappointed and dismayed that once the IHC parcel fell through, why those other locations weren't more vigorously pursued. And I would hope that we can revisit that, to the point of maybe even forming a committee, so that this issue does not keep getting, falling through the cracks. I know that, in addition to a physical presence at every single Parks and Commission meeting for the last nine months, half of all website requests have been for a dog park in the city. The need has been present since you, Mayor Petro, became a commission, a council member back in 2018. This city needs a place for our animals to be, to have off-leash access, to exercise and socialize. It is my understanding that Tyson Roberts has requested the Parks and Rec Committee present potential places where off-leash access could be made. And I would like for you to, once you hear that presentation, I think it's scheduled for next month, it is within your power to take immediate action. You can, you can designate an underutilized area immediately for our dogs to have off-leash access until one of these other parks can be developed more thoroughly. But it is a need that has consistently been there, and I would really appreciate your help in it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment.
Just to follow up with that, I'm Megan Smock. I actually live in Farmington, but I am a full-time professional pet sitter and dog walker that serves Leighton. So I am personally well aware of the pet needs in Leighton. I, I know all the parks. I know plenty of many, many families with dogs. And with all, with the increased housing that does not have yards, but has just as many dogs that need a place to run and to exercise and to socialize. And it is mutually beneficial to the dogs, to the owners, to get that exercise and socialization. It's, I want to compare it to if your, if your children had to go to school and not ever have recess, or not ever have playtime, or like these dogs, if they're just stuck in their houses and they go on a couple of walks a day, that's not enough. And I'm all for the leash laws. I'm all for dogs being leashed to keep the neighborhood safe. But an off-leash dog park would also keep dogs and people safe, because that's where they can go to run, instead of owners being tempted to let their dogs walk, run off-leash, just out in the city, which does cause problems. So, there is benefit to having an off-leash dog park. There are risks that I'm well aware of and would happily help address to reduce any risks, as I am a professional. And, and I know what all is entailed with, with dogs and their behavior, and their needs, and owners' needs. So I do really, really hope, and we've given, we can give plenty of options of places to use, whether they are existing parks, or just pieces of land, or parts of parks. There's many, many options to use immediately and long-term. And there's plenty of statistics of like how many houses are in Leighton, and how many of those houses, or apartments, or any kind of housing, has dogs that need a place to play and run. And it's beneficial for dog owners to socialize with each other and help each other. So, I do hope it is considered in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Michael Christensen, 1157 North, 2275 West. Not much of a dog lover, but there's a lot of land underneath High Pension Power Alliance that's good for nothing else but putting in a dog park. And we got plenty of that over on the west side. So, be a good cheap place to do something without costing the city much. I do want to speak toward the waste management issue. I guess tell my story a little bit. When I moved into Leighton nine and a half years ago, I signed up for the recycling program here. Now, I'm not much of a green freak, but I do want to try and do my part to help, help save the world and do what I can. I noticed that there were probably 40% of the homes in my neighborhood were signed up for that program at that time. And I noticed over the two or three years following that, that adoption slowly dropped off, and the blue cans started being replaced with second green cans in many of the neighborhoods, in the homes in my neighborhood. As, as the subscription dropped off, the service level decayed, and I finally turned in my blue can after not having it picked up for six consecutive weeks. I was very unhappy with the service level that was provided. And it was because participation dropped, that they weren't able to keep the service levels up. So I'm down to one green can. I didn't add a second green to my area. But these people who did make the change, they turned in a $7 recycling can for an $11 garbage can. They're paying more money. The proposal, as I understand it, from waste management coming in, is to make that service again available on a much wider basis, to where they will have enough customers to actually want to run the service the way it's supposed to be run, and even knock a dollar off the cost of what I was paying several years ago. And how, how many things around here have gotten less expensive in the last 10 years? Well, this is, this is one of them, as I understand the proposal. So, with high adoption rates, take a look at your, your city planners and utilities should be able to tell you how many people, what percentage of Leighton households have two garbage cans. A good chunk of those can turn in their second green can when a blue can comes out. And that needs to be taken into consideration, that you can save a lot of people money by not withdrawing from the district and doing our part to keep that landfill operational for another 20 years like we needed to.
Okay, being that it's a little quiet, I do know that this council has given a lot of thought on the landfill situation. And I believe now is an okay time, if they wish to express their views on this, so that you guys fully understand it, and then we can also continue to accept any comments. So, council, would you, does anybody wish to express their views on this?
Appreciate the opportunity, Madam Mayor. This is an important issue for us, and we wanted to actually have a discussion before we maybe receive some of that public comment, so we could kind of give you an idea of what the plan actually is. There's a lot of miscommunication, misunderstanding in the community about what we are actually doing, and about timelines and all of that. And so first things first, we are not out of the district. We're not going to be out of the district in July, unless they let us out. We have to go through legal processes to be able to request, to be able to be released from the district. So the intent that was sent over to the County Commission and to the WASETCH Integrated was simply just the first in a long line of steps that need to be completed, as we do our due diligence in discussing whether this is an option that we want to pursue. And so, when we found out a few weeks ago that the landfill, they were passing out a letter that was not to the residents, right, it was dated to, it was directed toward the County Commissioners, fulfilling a legal responsibility to send notice of what our intentions were. And that, on the back of that was stapled a bunch of, a bunch of problems, and this is why Leighton shouldn't be doing this, this is the timeframe, this is the cost it's going to be in July, the fees are going to be raised. One, that was not done by the city. That was done by WASETCH Integrated. And so the idea is that we are just starting this process, and, and we are welcome to public comment. We want to have this be fully discussed and vetted in a public forum. That's why this is here. That's why we wanted to make sure we had this meeting and discuss it, because nothing's been formalized, nothing's been finalized. We simply just started down the path to let the, the district know what our intentions were. And we've, as a staff, and as the council, have discussed this issue for a long, long time, months and months and months. We've gone through all the analyses from a financial standpoint, and all of the questions that I've gotten, at least from, from folks who send me emails, or fewer call me on the phone, most of them just send an email to me. If they call me, we could, we could talk about it, because there's a lot of miscommunication out there. And so, we are not going to be able to answer all the questions here from the stand. I mean, that's, that's going to take a time and process. But just know that this is just the first in a long line in scheduling, and that, that this is just the introductory. And encouraging the public to come and have their discussions here is our way of trying to make sure that, that the public is fully informed with what we're doing. We represent you, right? And the decisions that we've made, you, you know, unanimously as a mayor and council, signing that letter, very, very few times you get the, all six of us to agree on something, right? We're all pretty hard-headed, and we all have our own ideas about how we want to do things. But all six of us came to a similar conclusion after getting all the information that was provided by WASETCH Integrated, and all the information that was provided by the staff, and we made a, what we felt was an informed decision. A lot of that information has not been shared with the public, because that's what this time's for. And so, I just don't want it to be seen as that we were trying to hide anything, or trying to hide the ball, or anything like that. That's not what it was. All we're trying to do is, is start this process and engage in the discussion with the residents. Because all of the concerns we've heard about, I want to be able to make sure that my residential dumping is, is still at that $10 fee. We have plans to address that. We're not just assuming you're going to be paying the $50 fee to the WASETCH Integrated if you're, if we're not in the district. We've discussed that. We, we've discussed the, Mr., I believe it's Mr. Christensen, is that right? Mr. Christensen mentioned about the, the percentages of, of Leighton residents who have two cans. We have those numbers. And that's been a big part of some of the decision-making that we've had. And so for my, for my persons, what I want to do is, is just give an idea of maybe two more minutes about why I felt, just from a general standpoint, why I felt this was something that I wanted, and that we, I mean, me speaking individually now, wanted to pursue. So we are one of, was it 15 members of the, of WASETCH Integrated? One of 15 members, okay? And the voting, the voting mechanism within side WASETCH Integrated allows us, Leighton City, the same amount of votes as Sunset City and South Weber, even though we, we produce a vast, we produce by far the most revenue for WASETCH Integrated. So a lot of our discussions have been like, well, let's assume, let's just assume that WASETCH Integrated, and this isn't, just giving you a hypothetical, let's assume WASETCH Integrated wanted to raise rates across the board. We only have one vote on that, but we generate a very healthy substantial amount of that revenue. And so it felt that we, as a council, would not be able to, as your elected officials, that if you wanted to say, hey, I don't want you to raise my garbage rates, I don't want you to do X, Y, or Z, that you wouldn't be able to come here to do that. You'd have to go to WASETCH Integrated, and you'd have to discuss it with them, and you'd be, and Leighton would have one of 15 votes. That's not how we do the vast majority of our other utilities. Our other utilities are done, if we want to raise your water rates, guess who has to deal with the heat of that? All of us here. You get to come to these podiums and say, you guys are crazy, we're going to vote you out of office, this is terrible. And we can decide we're going to move forward, and then get voted out of office. But the problem is, is that when we have such a disproportionate share of the voting rights at that WASETCH Integrated, it puts the residents at, at a disadvantage, because we really can't protect you. We can't protect our residents from, from being potentially taken advantage of. And so that was a big portion of why we felt, in discussions with WASETCH Integrated, why we wanted to at least look at some of the solutions. Because if there was a mandates coming down, whether it's recycling or otherwise, it's really not about recycling. This isn't about recycling. We all, I think we all, I can speak for everyone, that we support recycling. We want to have a robust recycling program in the city. We have, I think, over 35% of the residents who are already engaged in that. And we have a big city. And so we definitely want it not to be construed as that recycling, Leighton is against recycling. It's really just about some other features that went about that caused the city and the city leadership to feel like maybe our residents are not having their best interest be put first. And then lastly, it's really just about, again, a fact-finding mission. We, we've, we think we have an idea where we want to go, but we don't make these, we don't make these decisions without having a robust public discussion. And that's what we're hopefully trying to introduce here as we discuss. And so if you And so if you want to share additional comments, we're obviously more than welcome to do that. But just know, this isn't the end here. This isn't where we're starting. This is the very beginning of the process, and we're open ears, and we want to know what you think, because we want to be able to try to find the best outcome for the residents of Leighton. And so, so speaking for myself, I take my responsibility as a Leighton City council member, I take it very, very seriously. And if I feel like that residents in the city, whether they're a little old lady up in the east side, or some single mother on the west side, or anywhere in between, if I'm their representative and I need to make sure that I can look them in the eye and say that we did everything we could to make sure that their rights and their property and their ability to have representative government was respected. And so that's where I'm coming from on this, and we're going to have a lot more discussion about how that works out in the future. But I appreciate Mayor Petro for giving me that opportunity, because it's something that's been on my mind. And if you called me on the phone, we've had probably a similar discussion, I've gone into a lot more detail. If you want to talk to me about this issue or any other issue, give me a call. I'm happy to talk. I'm happy to explain where we're at, and I love getting responses back from the members of the committee, because they can help me be able to understand where they're feeling on things, and that we can maybe move forward with their ideas, because we don't know everything, and that's why we want to make sure we hear from the public. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Anyone else wish to speak? And sir, I know you have your hand up, but please understand, we still want to hear from you. You're welcome to come up to the podium. I think we're going to hear from council member, excuse me, I think Councilmember Bettina Smith Edmondson wanted to make her statement first, but then you're welcome, and, well, let me be clear, if any other council members wish to express their views, I'm allowing you to do that. This is abnormal, but I feel like this is a big enough topic that I think you guys need to express your views and so that the citizens can understand, and then certainly, yes, we do welcome your input, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So I echo much of what Councilmember Bloxham has stated already. This is something that we have been talking about for quite some time, and I can speak for a number of us that we were ready to talk about this a long time ago. I have a recycling can at my house that I pay for every month. So this is in no way about Leighton not wanting to recycle or not wanting to participate in what we think is helping the, you know, helping the nation or the world, and that's a whole nother topic that I don't think we have time to discuss tonight. But the concerns that I had personally were the fact that the district basically told us last year that they were going to mandate us to do a recycling program for all of our residents. They told us that they were going to come and talk to us in advance and explain to us what their program was and how they wanted to roll it out and get our feedback, and then without doing any of that, they voted to move forward without even giving us an opportunity to do so. The council felt very strongly about that in a negative way, because if you all remember just a few years ago when we had the horrible droughts, we were able to work together as a community, as a city, and reduce our consumption of water usage, and we did that without making any mandates, without requiring certain things of everyone in the city. And so we felt that if there was to be a citywide program, that that was something we could rally behind and something that we could speak to the residents on and say, "Hey, let's do this together. Let's figure out how to increase our percentage in recycling." And so for me, it was a matter of principle when we were told that they were going to come to us, and then we could work together on how to roll out a program for our city, and then they decided that, no, we're going to just vote and have this done. And so that was my main issue with it from the beginning. I've spoken to other city council members in other cities, and, you know, that ended up in a long road of digging and searching and asking questions that we were unable to get answers from the district on. Mr. Christensen mentioned the twenty-year life of the landfill. We've heard twenty years, we've heard eight years, we've heard thirteen years, we've heard less than five years. So there have just been a lot of questions that we had. Thanks for our city staff, our attorney, work and the city manager working with the district and trying to get answers to the questions that we had. Again, I was one, and I'll speak just for myself, who was ready to blow the top off of this thing months ago, but we tried to do things in a calculated way. We tried to make sure that what we are doing is being respectful of our relationships and also being respectful of the residents and what you deserve. And so it was very surprising to all of us to find on Facebook groups and in emails and on the news that the WASatch, that the district was putting out a letter that was right with our letter, like an FAQ that had no letterhead, no information, no signatures that looked as though it came from us, talking about what was going to happen, when in fact, as Councilmember Bloxham just mentioned, there have been no agreements, no decisions, because we in fact cannot get out of the district without there being a formalized process. We can ask, can we be removed from the district? But that has to be granted. There are laws requiring, you know, folks giving us that opportunity. And so for that letter to go out saying, "On July 1, this is what's going to happen," that's just not true. It's simply not true. On July 1, you are still able to go and dump, as you have always been dumping, for $10, unless they are giving us, if that's, if they're saying we're giving you an out, then okay, and then we have, you know, a couple of months to really dig in and figure out more things. But that's just something that I felt strongly about and am happy, in a sense, that it came out the way that it did, because we do stand on integrity and we stand on the truth and wanted to be able to share the information that we gained and that we learned. We also in no way ever would do anything that we think would raise your rates unnecessarily, unfairly. As Councilmember Bloxham mentioned, there are other avenues that we have been introduced to. I've been one who asked, when I first got on the council, I was asking about recycling bins in our public parks, like, why don't we have this? And I've always asked about those things. I've asked about, you know, composting and just all of these other different ways that we can, you know, help in an environmental way. And so, again, this is in no way about a disdain for recycling or that Leighton does not want to do its part. In fact, Leighton does more than its part, because we are the largest city in the county, we are the largest city in this district right now. And if it weren't for the waste that we all provide to the landfill, the district would not be able to offer the rates that they're offering to the other cities that are a part of this district. And so I think that as a council, we felt that because Leighton offers so much to the district, that the district could do us the courtesy of working together and figuring out what's the best way forward. And so it's unfortunate that it went the way that it did, but I think we still stand on that. We still stand that it's in our best interest as a city to operate in the way that's best for us and for our residents, and that's what we're trying to do here. So it's unfortunate that the uproar has happened, but knowing the truth and knowing where we currently stand, I think that will help as we move forward. And I would hope that any of you who hear from folks who are talking about what the district has stated, that you will invite them to, you know, watch the replay of this, reach out to us via phone, text, email, however you want to reach out, but to get the truth of what is being said and not feed into the misinformation that you might be hearing. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you, Mayor Petro. I'll echo Councilwoman Bloxham and Councilwoman Smith Edmondson, their comments. I agree, I believe we're united. Just maybe a couple other points. We, I think it was June 2023, the district let out their plan to have this recycling plan be mandated throughout the district, and then they voted on it in November of 2024, sorry, 23, November 23. And we cut wind of that. And the part that upset me personally, the mandate part, is number one. We decided when we found out, we as a council and the mayor drafted a resolution in a public meeting, and we took that resolution to their meeting in the first part of 2024 and tried to negotiate at least, or let them know what, how we felt. And that, and what it was, was just against the mandate, and we were shot down. What I like about our, what we have here in Leighton City now, we have three contractors that'll come and pick up your recyclables, and it's voluntary. And we have more citizens involved in voluntary recycling than some of the towns in the district, their entire population. And so what we wanted to do, what we proposed to them, was we would be a little more aggressive in advertising, like Councilwoman Smith Edmondson mentioned, like we did with the water during the drought of, let's get together, let's be, let's work together to conserve the water, let's work together and let's increase the recycling in the city. I didn't want to do that. And so we were stuck with that, and we asked the city staff, and if it would, just went, if it was just about recycling, I think we probably would have been able to figure out a way forward. However, we asked, as we were, our due diligence of, okay, we're in this district, how was it created? Can you get out of it? What are the options? None of us knew. We started digging into it, the city staff, and they didn't know either, and neither did the district. The forming documents were kind of vague. Excuse me. Were kind of vague, and so now you have attorneys involved of, what does the language mean and such? And so we asked them to figure that, all that out, and asked them, if we, if we got out of the district, or if they let us out, what options do we have? With our volume, with our, the services that are provided there, what options do we have? They came back with, and I think this was on the FAQs on the website, a savings between $700,000 and $1 million a year of the savings of not being in the district, of garbage being picked up at your house. That caught our attention. Like, wait a minute, we're paying $700,000 to $1 million a year to be a member of this district, and you have to pay your garbage, and you have to pay to dump? Those were all questions that we got hit with, and that caught, again, that caught our attention in a big way, and that's where we are right now. So to Councilwoman Bloxham's point, we're at the very beginning of this. We want to do what's right. We want to do what's right for the residents of the city. We also don't want a mandate, and especially with recycling. We, I want you to know that when you take, when you put those, whatever you put in that bin, the cans, the paper, the cardboard, sometimes that doesn't end up recycled based on what's selling on the market for recyclable materials. I'm imagining a lot, the majority of the time, it is recycled, but some of the time it's not. And I want you to know that and be okay with that, and the way for you to be okay with that was to make it voluntary. To mandate it, we just don't want to do that. And they haven't moved off of that, the district, they, they're still in the towns and the cities that are rolling out with this bundled fee that they're doing. It's still mandated, and that was the thing that's got us started on this in the first place. So, again, we want to do what's right for the residents of the city. We want to save you money. We understand that being able to dump your waste on the weekend, you got to drop something off, we get that, and that needs to be part of whatever we do. And we might be able to figure this out with the district. Again, we don't know right now. We're fact-finding, as Councilwoman Bloxham said. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to jump in here, just to kind of clarify also, because I know that, you know, it was quoted in the paper that I misrepresented it or that I didn't have an opportunity, that I, and I'm being honest here, and I felt like I was being honest in saying that, I felt like that it was rushed, the decision was rushed, and the council can attest to this, I ended up making a call the day before I needed to vote on that, and so I was being honest in the fact that I felt like not all of the information was shared. However, I do want to say in regards to the resolution that we did go before the district to ask them to please rescind the action, and at that time, they did not take any action on it, but I did go back, as the board member and as your representative, I did go back to the district and I did share our concerns and said that, you know what, you do have a problem here, we cannot mandate this, we cannot force it on the residents. And so they were willing to adjust that program. They turned around and made it into an incentive program, so anybody who does want to participate will be incentivized based upon the amount of volume they bring in. So that being said, the way it is now, nothing changes. We're good to keep going the way we are. We're not being forced to recycle anymore. You guys are, it's a volunteer program, and I think that's what this council's trying to say, that that is a volunteer program. However, as also stated here, that caused us to take a deeper dive and really understand the financial impacts here, and that's where we're at. And it is my hope that going forward, we will be able to negotiate some type of resolution here that's going to be beneficial to all of us and really take those concerns, which I personally am one of those, as far as that $10 load fee in being able to load up my truck and go to the landfill or to a drop-off area. So I know that that's a big angst here, and as stated, that's something we still need to kind of look at and work out. So along with all the other services, I know the district offers a ton of services such as paint, solvents, mattresses, glass, iron, metal, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we need to take into consideration. So I support this council in doing their due diligence here and really kind of figuring out what's best for our city. Councilwoman Roberts?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I don't, I don't want to repeat anything that's been said, because I'd like to hear from the citizens, but a couple things, a couple points I would like to make from my perspective. First of all, kind of foundationally, this council here is a citizen council. We're members of the community also, and we utilize the same services that anyone in the city does. I have a, I have a property, have a business where I utilize that dumping of a load to the, taking a pickup load to the dump five or six times a year. So fifty bucks, fifty bucks a time would add up, and I understand that, we all understand that, and that's not the end game for us. But just remember that we are, we have to abide by all of the decisions we make, you know, just like anyone in the city, so keep that in mind. I also have a recycle can. If you drove past my house, you'd see a blue recycle can, even though I took it out on the wrong week, it was supposed to go out last week. But I also support that. It's not about recycling. I've got a, I don't know, I haven't counted the emails, about twenty, about twenty emails, some phone calls, even visited a friend in the city that had some questions about this. I've responded to every email. I've talked to everyone on the phone that's called me. And I think everyone's gone away after explaining the city's position with a little better understanding about the facts, and I appreciate that, that the fact that this is, this is the beginning, and we're, in order to really fairly and openly negotiate anything for the residents of the city, we thought it was best practice to inform the district, inform the commission. And I'm actually grateful for the letter that the district stapled to the back of our letter, even though it was kind of implied that it was from us, it wasn't, but it listed every service that we take advantage of as being a member of the district, and it helps us make sure that we can find every level of service that's currently offered at a savings for the city. So that's where I'm at. I think Leighton City has grown, whether, where maybe being a member of the district isn't the best option right now. I'm going to shut up now after I share a quote from one of my favorites. I'm gonna shut up now after I share a quote from one of my favorites, Ronald Reagan. He said, "The status quo, you know, is Latin for the mess we're in." So if we're, if we're just going along with what we're at, the services we're getting, and we're not looking for the best deal for our residents, then we're probably not doing our job for what we're elected to do. So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Last one?
Sure. Make it short.
Short. It'll be short. I can't speak very long, I don't know a lot of words. But I have to go against everybody here. I don't like recycling, okay? I'm sorry. But I just don't. And if anybody told me I had to do it, that kind of got the hair up on the back of my neck. And I respect people that want to recycle, I do. And if the city felt like they needed a recycling program that would benefit everybody here, then I'm all for it. You know, if that's what you want to do, that's great. I don't have a problem with that. I just probably wouldn't imbibe with it, you know? But that's, you know, I'm sure there's at least two other people out there in the city that would agree with me. But, you know, I just want to let you know that it's not necessarily what we think, it's what we think the citizens would respect. And that's how I feel. I got elected to do that. I got elected to make decisions that X amount of people don't agree with, but X amount of people do agree with. And so, you know, I can't always do the best thing. And I just wanted to say that, you know, because ain't no blue can going out in front of my house, you know? But if everybody else wants one, I think that's fine. That's great. You know, it's just that I don't like people telling me what to do. And that kind of puts a bird in my saddle. So, thanks.
Okay. I think you've heard from all of us here. So, citizens, if you want to comment on this, if you feel like you still need to, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I think you do understand where we're coming from.
Yeah, I do, but I want to fall back on...
Okay. I failed to mention, make sure you state your name, though.
Hi, my name's Jose Torres, resident of Layton forever, unless I was overseas for the Army.
Yes. Thank you for your service.
I live at 150 Ronald Avenue, if anyone's taking notes. As far as that young lady that was here earlier with animals, you know, with their dogs and stuff like that, I don't know if you've taken into consideration, or anyone else has, service animals, they need to get out.
Yeah.
And if we're not taking care of people that are handicapped, that need these service animals, veterans, what are we doing? How many of you know people that have service animals? Oh, that's a bunch. And that's only the ones that are here. So if you could please pay attention to that, so that you can help my veterans and my citizens that have special needs, that need service animals with them. And, because they need to get out and get some air, too. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you. I know you're a lifelong resident, so thank you.
Do you mind, Madam Mayor, if I just make a comment? Just for 30, 10 seconds?
Okay. Just know that, you know...
I mean, just on the dog park issue, we had an all-day budget meeting just a couple of weeks ago, and that issue was raised, we discussed it. So it's not something that we are, you know, ignoring in any way, shape, or form. We, like Councilman Roberts, has asked to have it briefed to the council, so it's something that we are aware of. So appreciate your service, sir. Thank you for bringing it up again.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Ryan Zentmeyer, and I'm here to express my deep concern and dismay over the Case Creek Estates project, and reassure you that even if we are not all able to attend every meeting, we are largely united as a neighborhood. These trees were not just decorative, they were a vital part of the neighborhood's identity, offering shade, beauty, and ecological value. Their removal has left a visible and emotional scar on our community. I want to remind the council that the city approved the PRUD. They approved the PRUD, including its plans that accounted for those trees. Whether or not there was a finalized or approved tree list at the time is besides the point. The city was responsible for its approval then and remains responsible now. That responsibility does not disappear just because details were incomplete or missed at the time of approval. At the last meeting, some councilmembers rightly raised concerns about reevaluating the project and whether the city should cover the full cost. I have spoken to many of the crew members of Pages, and this project has been, to quote one of them directly, "A hell of a lot more than we bargained for," which makes sense considering the bid accepted for this project was for Gordon Avenue and not actually Case Creek Estates. The city must cover the full cost of this project, including the thoughtful and timely replacement of every tree that has been removed. The community deserves more than torn-up land, which is privately owned, not owned by the city, and the empty spaces where the trees once stood. We deserve accountability, restoration, and leadership that prioritizes long-term sustainability over short-term fixes at an extreme cost to landowners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Henry Simpson. I live in, I've lived in the city since 1980, and, but I grew up in Ogden, so I'm a Utah resident for my entire life. I live at 540 North 1050 East. I lived at another house before that. But I was surprised when I heard about the plan of the waste management changes. And so I sent an email to all the councilmen and the mayor, and I got a couple of responses back. And I was pleased to hear from Tyson Roberts, Councilman Roberts. And he answered some of my questions and helped clear out some of my confusion and concerns. I read some of the documents. I went to the, I went to the dump, and I got this letter from them, which may be the one you're referring to. And I was interested to read the list of services that are offered. I've taken advantage of a number of those. I haul my yard waste up there, just as Mayor Petro said she does. I get rid of my hazardous wastes up there. And I don't have a blue can. My son used to live in this city and moved out of the state, and when he had his, he expressed some concerns, and I decided not to get one. But I have my own pickup truck, and I'm retired, so I can do with my time what my wife will let me do. And so I haul my own cardboard and plastic and glass up to the dump. I don't know if that will stop, if this whole thing changes, if they'll no longer allow... They don't, it's not actually inside where you have to show your ID and everything, so I suppose it might not. But I would welcome the opportunity to use a recycling can. Unlike Councilman Thomas, I believe in recycling. He's free to believe how he wants. But I think it will shorten the life of the dump if we continue to put all of our recyclables into the dump. And I'm not sure what the number is. I heard several numbers given, but it's not forever. And I remember, I used to go up to the dump way back in the days when you were taking your life into your hands to drive into the dump and dump something. I was always afraid I would lose a tire while I was in there. There are all kinds of strange things sticking up, and I appreciate what we have now. But some of the things that I've read, I was directed by one of the councilmen, I don't remember which one, to the, to the letter that's on the Layton City site. And some of the things there I questioned. But I understand that there are some things that you can't talk about if you're, if you're in negotiations with somebody that has to be kept confidential until a decision is made to meet requirements of the law. There is one question that came up as I was sitting here. This waste management district, are they required to hold public meetings? Is there a way to find out when those meetings are held? I would love to attend one of those meetings. I'm not a rabble-rouser, but I do like to keep informed, and I like to call people out when they say things that I don't agree with, that seem to me to be confusing or dishonest. Maybe not dishonest is not the right word, but they're trying to keep you from learning what you need to know to make a good decision. So I am in favor of what we have now. I think it's been good for me. I'm a little surprised that every city has the same vote on that board. Even our Congress has, well, they have two houses, of course, but in the House of Representatives, it depends on how big you are, how much vote you get. So I have a feeling that maybe that should change. I don't know how that should be changed, but maybe it should. I would be horrified if I could no longer dump my yard waste for a reasonable fee. $50 is too much. And Mayor Petro called me on the phone, I was really surprised. This is the mayor. Why is the mayor calling me? But anyway, I appreciated the call, and we had a good conversation. And I expressed a concern that if we can no longer find a reasonable and cost-effective way to get rid of our yard waste, you'll find people dropping it off wherever they can find an open spot. Or they'll burn it. We used to burn it all. When I was growing up, we burned all of our stuff at home in Ogden, but I realize that's not reasonable or possible. It's dangerous. So I made a couple of notes. I would like to know how the council came up with the idea that it would save $700,000 to $1 million on the city budget if we left the current system. I'm not convinced that that's an accurate number. I'm not sure we're comparing apples and apples here. In fact, I read in the notes in one of these that if yard waste is not included, we can just take it to the dump and pay the going rate. Maybe that was an inappropriate comment, but it got my attention. I don't want to pay $50. It's not worth it to me.
Thank you. You know, one thing I failed to mention, and believe me, I don't want to prevent anyone from saying anything, but certainly typically we time, you know, want to make sure that we allow citizens at least three minutes. But I know that if you're close to it, that's fine, I'm not going to be that strict. However, I think in order to be courteous to everybody that does want to make a comment, we probably need to follow that guideline tonight. So with that, I'll go ahead and allow the next person to speak.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Brown. I live just a few blocks away on Whiteside Street. This is the city I've chosen to raise my daughters in. But I'm starting to question that. I'm deeply concerned by the city's decision to withdraw from Wasage Integrated Waste. To my knowledge, residents were not consulted before this major change was set in motion. And when the decision made headlines, none of our elected council members or our mayor spoke publicly about it, only our unelected city manager. For a move that could significantly affect every household in Layton, that seems like a disappointing lack of transparency. I grew up in Salt Lake County. I'm not a lifelong resident of Layton, but when I was a teenager, Salt Lake County and many cities in Salt Lake County started mandating a blue can for recycling and then another can for green waste. And my parents were ticked, but immediately understood the benefit. Our trash can was overflowing beforehand every single week, and afterwards, we pulled it out maybe once a month. And the amount of waste that we could redirect is probably going to be astonishing. I personally, of course, support the recycling and green waste programs and all of the other safe disposal options that the district offers to us. And I urge the council to reconsider this, and at the very least, slow down before moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Justin Anderson, Layton City resident. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you tonight for taking the time to explain this garbage issue to us. I know, Madam Mayor, you personally visited with me and discussed this issue and answered some questions. And I think what led to a lot of residents' anxiety is the messaging and being caught off guard about this. And so I think that had a lot to do with it. I'm somebody who probably understands garbage a little more than others, and I understand tonnage matters in the garbage world. And as the biggest city in Davis County, being able to have more representation on that board matters. And so I can appreciate what is trying to be done there in being able to better represent the citizens of Layton and to keep the cost down. With that, I also understand and have visited Waste Integrated and seen their MRF, right? Their MRF is probably the best, at least in northern Utah, especially at separating recyclables that might have contamination in them. And so I don't know the audit rates that Layton City has with their recyclables, but I definitely understand what happens there and the good things that happen with recycling. However, I also believe an opt-in is much better than having to just mandatory opt-out. And so I would be a fan of that. I also want to say that it is good to plan for the future. Landfills fill up, and there needs to be a plan on what to do with that. And I also recognize that waste haulers, like such as Robinson, and there's many others, that we need to be careful at them giving a great deal to start off and raising the rates. It's kind of like the satellite TV providers, right? I think we all can relate to that. And so we need to make sure that for the long term, that that is what's going to be in the best interest. The last thing I would like to say is concerning the hauling that takes place to the landfill. I know they charge extra for uncovered loads. Right where I live, which is not far from 193 and right off of 89, there is a pretty substantial amount of trash that blows off the road, and it doesn't look very good. And the hard part for us as a neighborhood is when UDOT did 89, and we didn't get a sound wall, but we did get a nice fence and all the garbage that collects there. It now makes it impossible for us to be able to actually go collect that, and we have to stare at garbage from trucks that have been driving by and having, not being fully emptied. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Dan Harward. I just live off of Sunset and 89. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for having this meeting tonight. I'm probably one of many small business owners in Layton. I've been here the better part of 25 years. I own a grounds maintenance company, so we rely heavily on the landfill. So, councilmember, you mentioned you go four or five times a year. We do that in less than a week. And so, you know, it's, I love what I do. It's a family business. I've been doing it all my life. But, you know, it's not glamorous, but it pays the bills. And I've gone to, I've really come to rely on the, not just the convenience of the location, but the price as far as the landfill, since about 90% of what we do each week is all green waste. I've heard a lot tonight from all the council members about one common theme, which is the mandate. We don't like being told what to do. And though I can respect that, and I know that, hey, nobody wants to be forced, nobody wants to be told what to do, you can't deny the many things that the landfill offers. So even though you say that, you know, this is just the beginning of the process, it concerns me in the fact that, well, but... me in the fact that, well, that there is an active attempt to want to get out of the district. And so I think, okay, so you get out of the district. Well, then what's the plan? Have our own landfill? Now, obviously, I've got the same letter that, you know, was given. Obviously, there may be some misinformation, some things like that. I'm not going to go over the particulars tonight, obviously, because, you know, it may or may not be valid. I would just hope that we're going with caution because, like I said, it's so conveniently located and such a great price point that I have a hard time thinking, okay, what could be better than that? And so if we opt out, then what? And so I think, okay, if that's going to add more time or money, then, okay, am I going to have to move my business elsewhere? Because my bottom line is kind of dependent on affordable waste disposal, especially green waste. And if that shoots up, even if it is the 50 bucks, you know, you're talking $300 a week, I can't cover that. And I certainly can't pass that on to my clients. It's just not feasible. So I would just caution and hope that regardless of the outcome, that as was mentioned by one citizen, that we're making sure to take the time necessary to do so, to do it. But also at the same time, taking time to look at the options, that you expedite the information, especially to small business owners, as far as what's going to happen so that come in July, if those rates did go up, if they did, I would have time to make other adjustments, just because I'm a regular citizen, taxpaying or whatever, and I need to know what's going on. So as you come up with information, I would hope that you share that as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Thank you. This has been really helpful tonight. You have taught me a lot, and I appreciate that. And I want to teach you something, if that's okay. My name is Louise Brown. My address is 343 South, 750 East, Tarran, Layton. I have the copy of the infamous letter in my hand. Got it this past week when I went and did my $10 truckload of garbage, no, green waste at the landfill. I appreciate what you've said here tonight, and I have learned a lot. But something I want to maybe just share with you is that the comment, I appreciate hearing that you've been talking about this for months and months because the word out there is that you haven't. And so thanks for telling us that. There are some really conflicting messages going on, and I know that you know that. But I must say that when you, Mr. Blox, when you said this is the very beginning of the process, and the front of this letter says, from you all, says, "On behalf of this council, we write to formally inform you of our intent to withdraw," that feels like you've already, you're at the end of the process, not the beginning. And I honestly think that's what has thrown a lot of people out, you know, by that phrase, that statement. It's like, wait, when did we get to be in on this? When did we as citizens get to be in on this? And it was, I'm sure maybe you've rethought that, I hope, anyway. And then later on in here, saying that this is, yeah. Oh, I wanted to ask, how many of you have been to the material recovery facility, the Isn't it amazing? It's like a giant Rube Goldberg thing going on and on and on. And by the end of it, you have bales of, and I have someone very close to me that works there, and I have had a lot of background information from her about how that thing runs, and I think it's very fun and very productive and very helpful to the process. I just, I also wanted to say that the other letter, there was comment that there wasn't a signature, there wasn't a letterhead. Not true. It's all there. And the thing that I really appreciate the most about this, yeah, this is what I got this week, so this is what's being handed out there. At the very end of their letter, that letter, it says, "Please feel free to contact me." This is over the signature of Nathan Rich, Executive Director. "Please feel free to contact me if you'd like to discuss this in further detail." And he is available. On the letter from Layton City, you all have signed this. This is nice, but it says, "If I want any more information, I'll read it. Should you have any questions or require further discussion, feel free to contact Layton City Manager, Alex Jensen." And that kind of, you know, love Alex, but that's not his signature, and he is not my elected official, and he is not accountable, like you all are. So you might want to rethink that piece of communication as well. I think that might be a better deal for folks. Thank you.
Mayor, can I?
I feel like there's some misunderstanding and miscommunication about the process. Would it be okay if I just gave a really quick, brief rundown? Because I think there's some real misinformation.
Yes, however, I'm looking and want to make sure that, I know that...
People can still comment. I just, I think it, I think there's a misunderstanding about how this all went about. So just briefly, the letter and the wording in that letter, as Councilmember Bloxum noted, is more of a legal process. And that letter was addressed to the county commission, which is the body that has the authority to consider this. That's why there's no reach out to me, anything like that, because it's just a letter to begin, to initiate the process. But one thing that I think isn't clear is, and I can speak because I've heard every single one of these council members and the mayor say this, it was always the plan to get input from the citizens. It was always the plan to have these public discussions. It was not the city that, I'll use the phrase, jumped the gun and caused this process to kind of spiral out of control. The process was always done in a way that was meant to be respectful of the district and of the county commissioners. Out of respect for the district and the county commissioners, myself and the city manager first visited with the director of the district and his attorney and informed him of our intent and the reasons why. We then told him that we were going to proceed and have that same discussion with the county commission, and then we would come back and have, begin the conversations with the public. The reason for that process is important because the county commissioners are the ones that have the ability to withdraw us from the district. They can, their decision power carries great weight. We did not want them to feel disrespected, like we were doing some sort of a political maneuver to go around their back and to begin some sort of citizen outrage where they would be having this pressure to make a decision. So it was always the purpose of this council and this mayor to have this discussion publicly. But because somebody outside of Layton City and outside of the district, frankly, I think it was, decided to put this out to the press, we were then forced to do this in a way that was not the plan from the very beginning. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that it was always the plan to have these discussions, and I hope the public can understand that the purpose and the order in which it was done was out of respect for the organizations that we work with. We work with the district. We're still members of the district, and we will continue to be members of the district until there's a decision that's made by this city council and by the county commission. And so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that this wasn't some sort of thing that was poorly messaged. It was messaged from the very beginning that we intended to take this to the public, but that we wanted to make sure that we went through the proper channels so that we could continue to have professional working relationships with the other organizations that we work with, namely the district and the county commissioners. So I just wanted to clear that up because I think there maybe was some misunderstandings about how this went about. This was always the plan, and in fact, the council months ago was very anxious to have these conversations, but at that point, we didn't have, the staff didn't have the analysis done. This was, as has been mentioned a couple of times, this took a great deal of analysis from financial experts, both inside and outside the city. And these numbers were heavily scrutinized. And so because we were still, we still wanted to give them the best information possible before they decided to trigger this process of having this open discussion, it was delayed a little bit. But I just, again, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that there was always the intent to have these discussions. It was our belief, and we still believe it was the proper way to go, is to have those discussions with those organizations first and then get the feedback from the public so that we could know which way to best move forward, if moving forward at all, depending on what the public input was and what the council's decision is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. What you've witnessed here is exactly why I wanted to know if we should have allowed this discussion to take place after the business portion of our meeting, knowing, I wanted to respect those that are here for the business part, but at the same time, I thoroughly want to make sure that we give everyone their chance to speak. So does anyone have anything new or a comment at all at this point in time for our citizens'
Good evening. My name's Dennis Guffey. I've been a resident not very long, about 25 years. And when I moved here, moving from Oregon, I was very pleased I lived close to the dump, and it was cheap. But after a year, I noticed something, and I think all of you and your predecessors should have noticed. It was going to fill up. And what I've heard here tonight is this kind of has been a surprise. And I say, shame on you. It should have not been any surprise. It was going to come. It's very similar that, I don't know whether you noticed or not, we live in a desert, and there's a limited amount of water. It's not infinite. But all we can think to do is create more uses of water. In this city, anyway, that's what I've seen. There's been no idea that we need to reduce how much water we use. And we say it, well, we'll do it like the federal government does. We'll spend money we don't have by taking it from those that do have money. If we're going to solve this, and this is the point I wanted to make, we can't use the same kind of thinking we've been doing for the last 50 years. We've got to come up with viable alternatives that will work, not for tomorrow, but for the next 200 years. I don't know if Layton has a 100-year plan for how the city's supposed to look. Every city I've ever lived in doesn't have one. We should have one that addresses all of these services that citizens have grown to expect. With that, I hope that you can, I hope the Lord blesses you with a different way of thinking. And I say this in a, never mind.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. In response to that, I guess tonight's unusual, but I will tell you that, yes, there has been some additional thinking and action that's already taken place. I mean, unfortunately, yes, we do know that that landfill is filling up, and it is filling up. And the district currently does, just so you folks know here, they do transfer waste out of here to help preserve the life of that landfill. Ultimately, it will be a transfer station. So everything will be transferred out of this valley here and be taken out to, whether it's out to Tecoy currently in the west desert or down south, to the Bayview landfill. It will be taken out of here. All of that comes at a cost, and that's what we're faced with today. So I'm welcome to answer any more questions on that, but I feel like I need to move the meeting along. Sir, you want to address this body?
Yeah.
Go ahead and stand up to the mic, state your name.
I'm John. Shiloh Kestrel, Layton City resident. Nice to see you guys again. So, correct me if I'm wrong, are we not already paying with tax dollars to have recyclables removed from our trash right now? And I apologize if somebody already brought this up. I'm late, so you can stop me if I did. So we are already using tax dollars to remove recyclables from our trash. I fail to understand how it is going to cost us more money if we are having our residents literally do that. We're not paying people to do that. And I'm having a little trouble with those numbers, exactly how that's like going to add up. Because if we're already paying people, we're paying wages for people to remove recyclables from our trash, wouldn't it make more sense if we just had people actually do that? I have neighbors who, every week, I'm one of only two houses that has a recycling bin. And all of my neighbors, not all, but most of them, have two trash cans full of stuff. Most of it is actually recyclables, I've seen, because it spills out on the street all the time. And so you're telling me that it's going to cost us less money to not have those people put it in the recycling and just have all of that get sent to a dump? And I apologize, I'm just a, you know, simple engineer. I'm just trying to figure out how those numbers are adding up if you're telling me that's going to be cheaper. So I'm not looking for an answer from you right now. I'm just saying, though, that I've looked at that, and those numbers don't add up. That's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Do you want me to address that? So I was going to say, I'll give you a quick answer. Number one is, it was stated earlier that this facility has a MRF, which is a manufacturing, recycling facility. What happens now is you have commingled garbage and recyclables in the same can. When it goes to the facility, it gets processed, and they try to pull out those recyclables. But remember...
They don't. They don't do it anymore.
Excuse me. They do. The thing of it is, you're out of order, and I'm going to call it now. So the point is, they do recycle, but it's a dirty recycle. And just like anything else, the more pure you can make it in the recycling process, that's what they're trying to accomplish. I'm not taking a position either way. I'm just merely trying to educate that that was the purpose of the MRF, and that's why a few years ago, we said, hey, you can put your recyclables in your trash because it does get processed that way. What has changed is they do not have a team specifically now that actually picks it out. The mechanical portion of the processing up there does it, and the way that they can only do it is based upon keeping those garbage collections that come up there, they keep the quote recyclable cans, the blue cans, in one pile, and they keep the commingling in another pile. So when they process, they try to pick out the good stuff out of the commingled, but the real recycling takes place with those blue cans, and they process that separately. So that's how the operation works now. That's just merely an education here for everyone here. Is there any other comments? Otherwise, I would like to move our meeting along. Okay, seeing that there's none, I'm going to go ahead and move on to our consent items. And just so everyone knows here, our consent items are actions. There's four of them on tonight's agenda. So what will take place is the council will be able to hear all four items. However, they can wait and take a, they will act in one single motion based upon those items after all four of them have been presented. So with that, I want to go ahead and turn the time over to Mr. Steve Jackson, and he will be presenting the agreement between Layton City and the Park Ridge Improvement Payback Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's good to be with you tonight. For your consideration, Resolution 2520 for an improvements payback agreement between Layton City and Park Ridge Incorporated. Park Ridge Incorporated was the developer of the Ridgeview East subdivision. As part of the development agreement and process, they were allowed to request a payback agreement for roughly 100 feet of sewer line and 100 feet of water line that has been installed in the new public street that will directly benefit other properties outside of the Park Ridge development, and then also the storm drain that was upsized from a 15-inch to an 18-inch, and then roughly 80 feet of that storm drain that was also added on to that. The total cost of the reimbursement would be up to $21,705.06. The benefited properties are the two properties directly to the north of the Ridgeview East subdivision. The water and sewer portion of the agreement would apply to the 5.309 acre parcel, and the storm drain would apply to the 5.309 acre parcel as well as the 8.434 acre parcel to the north. The agreement allows for the city to collect the payback from those properties as they develop, if they make connections to the... as they develop, if they make connections to the utilities, if they don't use the utilities, they don't pay these paybacks. Um, the city would recommend, or the staff, excuse me, recommends that the council adopt Resolution 2520 and approve, uh, the agreement between Leighton City and Park Ridge, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Are there any questions that I can answer for anyone?
Council, I know you had an opportunity to look through the packet, we did not have a work meeting, but if you have any questions, please do, go ahead and ask.
You answered the only question that I generally have on these, which is if they don't develop, then they don't pay it back, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and go on to item number B, um, which Mr. Dave Price will be here, it's, uh, will present to us, it's regarding an agreement between Leighton City and the Nature Conservancy and Case Creek Irrigation Company.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening I have the pleasure of introducing Resolution 2521. If passed, this resolution will authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Nature Conservancy and Case Creek Irrigation Company for the realignment of irrigation water located at approximately 1825 West Weber Lane. The Nature Conservancy historically has used the Case Creek Irrigation Company's irrigation ditch for transporting water to its property. This irrigation ditch branches off from Case Creek, located in Leighton near Angel Street, and then travels through a prescriptive easement along the Caseville northern border, along the northern property of the present Caseville West Gate Estates subdivision, where it empties into a drainage culvert and travels underneath the newly established UDOT West Davis Corridor onto the Nature Conservancy's property. The Nature Conservancy and Case Creek Irrigation Company approached the city to find an alternate way to route secondary water to the Nature Conservancy's property through the city's future Case Creek State of Park, I'm sorry, Case Creek Estates Park. The Nature Conservancy currently has, currently and future abilities to maintain and service the present alignment of this prescriptive easement is, is difficult, and eventually this prescriptive easement will be abandoned. City staff has met with representatives of the Nature Conservancy and Case Creek Irrigation Company to discuss the possible benefits for each party. Leighton City, the Nature Conservancy, and Case Creek Irrigation propose an agreement with terms for the exchanging of water shares and aligning an easement to house a irrigation pipe owned and maintained by Case Creek Irrigation within the city's park property. This diagram that you see, uh, on the screen right now, the new point of connection would be just north of our park property. It would utilize an existing pipe that comes down to our park property, and then we are asking for a new pipe to be installed from that point down along the trail to the diversionary structure that takes it underneath the freeway. This new alignment will include taking water from Case Creek at a point of diversion farther south, closer to the park. The agreement will require that the Nature Conservancy will construct and maintain the pipe at its cost and repair any damage to the trail or future park developments at its cost. So, if in the future, work needs to be done and they need to tear up a sidewalk, it will be on their dollar to repair that sidewalk. This agreement also requires the Nature Conservancy to apply for a 404 permit with the U.S. Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers. This permit, if approved, would provide for a new point of diversion on the west side of the West Davis Highway, allowing the Nature Conservancy to divert and distribute the irrigation water across their property from their property. This agreement also includes the abandonment of the existing Case Creek Irrigation prescriptive easement and exchanging secondary water shares to further the city's interest in providing pressurized secondary water throughout the city. The staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 2521, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement between Leighton City, the Nature Conservancy, and Case Creek Irrigation Company for the realign, realignment of irrigation water to be piped within the future site of Case Creek Estates Park. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
I see Mr. Green in the audience, this might be a question for him, but is this, would this end up being, it says it'll be owned by Nature Conservancy, owned and maintained, so I'm assuming this is after the point of diversion from Case Creek irrigation?
Yes. And we, we have Steve and the attorney here, uh, that drafted this agreement or helped draft it, and so if I misspeak, please step up. But the, the diversionary structure within Case Creek at the south, or the new diversionary structure would actually be turned over to, um, the Nature Conservancy.
Good. So, the reason I ask is, um, liability, who, who, where does the liability for the Case Creek, the company, I guess it's referred to, and, and liability for the pipe for Nature Conservancy begin, is my question.
And again, Jayden, you can feel free to correct me, um, but I believe because this, this, um, transfer includes not only the construction of a new pipe for the Nature Conservancy, but they will, um, transfer shares from Case Creek Irrigation Company to the city. It will transfer that liability from, from Case Creek to the city, or I'm sorry, from Case Creek to the Nature Conservancy. They'll bear the burden of that.
Well, that, I think that accounts for the water, but I'm, I guess my question is, some of the existing pipe goes underneath Case Creek, or, uh, Case Creek Estates, correct?
Along the trail on the north side of the Case Creek Estates.
Okay, so, I'm wondering who's liable for that pipe that isn't new?
Steve, do you wanna address that?
In addition to that, perhaps you can answer who also is liable for, under the freeway, because I know that that was a new construction, so maybe answer both those questions.
Yeah, so, so the, the agreement actually transfers ownership of the diversion structure that sits on Case Creek and all of the pipe from the diversion structure through the trail area, through this, the future city park to the Nature Conservancy. So, they're the full ownership, they're the full maintenance operator of all of that. And then, with the, the transfer of the water, then, then Nature Conservancy basically is their own independent entity that owns all of that. Um, my understanding is the pipe that goes under the West Davis Corridor is owned by UDOT. Um, I could be mistaken on that, but I believe that that is still UDOT's pipe, and that once it gets to the other side of the, the right of way, then it, the water then is the responsibility of Nature Conservancy.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I just wanna state, I, I think this is a good agreement, uh, it benefits all three parties. Also, it's eliminating an open ditch that's outside of our city, so I think it's also good to, to get rid of those as where we can, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Okay, Mr. Price, I think you're gonna stay up at the podium and go ahead and go on to the, um, bid award, which is item number C.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this evening I also have the pleasure of introducing Resolution 2522. If passed, this resolution will authorize the execution of agreement between Leighton City and Cash Valley Electric for the Constitution Circle Pedestrian Lighting Project 2402. Located at 403 North Wasatch Drive, the, the project includes the installation of 22 pedestrian light poles and two street light poles. These poles are, as you can see in the drawing here, they are the exact same pole that is used in the south side of Commons Park, along the main sidewalk there, if you've seen those. During the process, we received four bids on March 20th, 2025, with Cash Valley Electric submitting the lowest responsive, responsible bid of 182,650. As the council can see on the screen, Salmon Electric provided the lowest apparent bid at the time of the bid opening. As staff reviewed the bid documents, it became evident that Salmon Electric had disregarded the contract documents and written instructions given to the bidders. In this instance, Salmon Electric executed, or excluded, surveying and irrigation repairs from their bid. Staff contacted Salmon Electric and confirmed their bid amount did not include surveying and irrigation repair. With this knowledge, staff excluded Salmon Electric's bid from the consideration, because it was not responsive or responsible to the contract documents or the written instructions given to the bidder before the bid opening. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 2522, authorizing the city manager to conduct negotiations and execute an agreement between Leighton City and Cash Valley Electric Company for the construction of the Constitution Pedestrian Lighting Project 2402. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, any questions?
Just, um, it says receptacles, so you're gonna put a receptacle on the base of the poles?
Yes.
And will that be used for lighting, or will it just be just in case? I mean, Christmas lighting?
Yeah, I think, I'm, Dave, I think the receptacle, or the, the electrical outlet is on some of them, and it is at the lower end of the pole. It will be used, um, during the summer for festivals, and as well as in the wintertime.
Okay, I just wondered, yeah, because it's a good thing to have them, there's no question, yeah.
Council, nurse.
Dave, was this, was this on the last year's budget that was taken off? Is that, if I remember right, or is this?
This, I, I believe, um, Councilman, it was two years ago.
Okay, I've, 'cause I remember this, but, okay.
Yeah, where it was removed because of some funding difficulties, and then we, um, put a, we requested additional funding the next year, and it was approved.
And I just wanna thank you for anticipating questions. As we saw the four bids, um, there's always the question, well, first of all, I'm glad that there were four bids, and not like, one or two, because that's always concerning. But, um, seeing that lowest bid on there, and then wondering, why did you go with the next, you know, the next lowest, um, bid? So, I appreciate the detail provided as to why that other bid was not responsive or responsible, um, and actually highlighting and itemizing what was missing, um, because those are, those are just important things for us to know, so I appreciate you providing that without, without me having to ask, because you knew I would, but thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Roberts, did you have a comment? You're good?
Thank you.
Okay, if everyone's good, then I'll go on to the last item of our consent items tonight, which Weston Appoloni will present this, and this is a plat amendment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, before you tonight is an amendment to amend the Tennis Academy of Utah subdivision. The private country club subdivision is adjacent to the, excuse me, uh, is adjacent to the M2 heavy industrial, uh, properties that are east, uh, excuse me, to the, uh, industrial properties to the east here. Existing single-family uses to the west and south, and future residential to the north. The initial subdivision was recorded, uh, on November 2024 as a single lot subdivision. Uh, this is the original. The proposed amendment, um, excuse me, the recorded plat, uh, the current recorded plat has one lot with 2.3 acres with the amendment. The lot would become 3.3 acres. On February 25, 2025, the planning commission approved the amendment, um, conditional use permit for an expansion of a private country club to include the additional acreage for the outdoor tennis and pickleball courts. On March 11th, 2025, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend the council approve the amendment, or excuse me, the amended plat for the Tennis Academy of Utah subdivision, First Amendment plat, subject to meeting all city requirements. Staff supports the recommendation of the planning commission. Any questions?
Okay, very good. Any questions, Council?
That, that was outdoor, right?
This section is outdoor, that's correct.
Yeah, and behind, yeah, okay.
That's correct.
Councilman Roberts?
Was this acre included in the, the development to the north that we approved?
It was not.
A month ago? No, okay. It was just in limbo at the time, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, it may be unrelated, well, it's related, but it may not be able to be answered, um, with this, this particular resolution, but, um, I'm wondering, as these are outdoor and they're being added to the tennis academy, was there any, um, discussion about these outdoor amenities being used in conjunction with the other properties that we have, um, approved? Is that what this is, or is there something different that's gonna be in that other?
That would be better for the developer to answer, but I will tell you that the developer does intend to have some of those residents access those courts, um, so that will be part of it.
Okay, so it's not accessible by the public, but accessible by this, um, this tennis facility as well as the development that they are planning?
Yeah, potentially some of them, yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and, thank you, Mr. Appoloni, for your presentation there. Uh, Council, I'll go ahead and bring the consent items back to you for action. If you could, please just, um, state the resolution, and, um, well, I guess the last one's a plat amendment, so if you could state that, please.
Sure. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-20, Resolution 25-21, Resolution 25-22, and the plat amendment, First Amendment at 1248 West Gentile Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we, uh, adopt the consent items as presented tonight, stating the resolution number and the plat amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our consent items tonight. We'll now move on to our public hearing. Uh, the first item up is a rezone request for a concept plan and development agreement, and, uh, Mr. Appoloni, I guess, that's what I had to say up there, but, uh, come back to the podium if you would, and go ahead and present this information to the council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, again. The proposed property for the rezone contains 5.8 acres, and the property is located on the west side of Main Street at 850 South, uh, and is the, uh, and is north of the existing Davis Behavioral Health Building. The proposed development site is currently zoned CTH. Properties to the north consist of an office building and storage units that are zoned CH. To the east, across Main Street, is a townhome development and a condominium apartment development, and to the south is the North Fork, North Fork of Holmes Creek, a residential dwelling, and an existing Davis Behavioral Health Building. The applicant, Sam Ball, representing Davis Behavioral Health, is requesting a rezone for the subject property. The proposed concept plan includes 180 apartments and a commercial maintenance building that fronts Main Street. The apartment units would be located on the southwestern two-thirds of the subject property. The general plan identifies the subject property as located within the mixed-use corridor, Main Street and I-15. Some of the strategies outlined in the general plan for this area include mixed-use areas encouraged, encouraged, where infill and redevelopment reinvestments are desired, providing convenient access to higher-capacity, uh, arterial streets and/or transit services, and the desire, uh, desired building heights are typically three stories and are compatible with surrounding uses. As stated earlier, the buildings, just to the, um, northeast of this is a two-story office building. Staff has been working with the applicant on the mixed-use concepts, um, to create a mixed-use development requirement commercial building up front. The commercial maintenance building will be constructed to an existing, uh, two-story office retail building, which is to the north adjacent, uh, on the adjacent property. The development agreement, uh, requires a timeframe for when the commercial maintenance building is to be constructed, to ensure the building is completed. This will be during the, the construction of Phase 1B. This will be during the construction of Phase One B. The commercial maintenance building will be, will front Main Street with direct pedestrian and public street and parking access located on the south side of the building. The commercial maintenance building will be a total of thirteen thousand square feet with seven thousand square feet of two-story office component added to that building. In front of you is the landscape and amenities plan, which includes Includes sport courts, community gardens, plazas, patios, patio areas, and walking paths. The walking path would exist along the existing creek that is along the property lying on Phase one includes the first of three proposed apartment buildings for the campus site, which includes a sixty-unit apartment complex that is located in the southwest. That's this structure here. All buildings will have four-sided architecture. The first building you were seeing is the office building, and the image you see on the, the bottom is what would front Main Street. As stated, development agreement is accompanying the rezone and has been included in the packet. On March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the planning commission voted unanimously, unanimously to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the rezone with concept plan, requests from CH Planned Highway Commercial to MU Mixed Use Zone. In addition, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the development agreement. Staff does support the planning commission's recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Council, at this time, you're welcome to ask any of your questions, and upon the end of your discussion, then I'll call for a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Weston, a year ago, there was an amendment to the MU zone to allow for detox, medical detox, and at the time, I believe we were talking about this property, so north of Davis Behavioral. Is this, is that not part of the plan of this now?
That's not, that was, that was tied to the MUTOD zone, and this is not to function as a
This is not that.
It's not to function as a detox center.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Can you talk a little about the parking? Go back to one of those images where it showed, right there, it shows a access to the existing parking lot behind Davis Behavioral Health. Is all of the parking for the, for full build-out of this project onsite, or is there intent to use parking behind Davis Behavioral Health?
Yeah, they, they do intend to put all their parking on this, on the site, however, what the property they're connecting to is also their Davis Behavioral Health, and so they, they find it beneficial to have that connection, although that will be in previous, or in, in, in future phases. But as the phases come, they will be required to have the sufficient parking for each phase onsite.
Good. Now, is that intended to be an open driveway, or, or no? I'm just, I'm a little concerned about cross-traffic, people leaving an apartment in the west and going through Davis Behavioral Health's parking lot to access Main Street?
Yeah, that, that would be a good question for them. I know that there's, because there's a creek that they've got to go over, there's a lot of work that has to be done on, in engineering, on how that will look and what it's, how it's gonna actually function. So I don't have those details, the applicant may have more details on what that looks like.
Okay, thanks.
So at this time, it's technically just the two forward, two northern buildings?
Correct.
Okay, Councilman Smith Edmondson?
Thank you. So in the development agreement, which you know I love, I'm happy to see those, the development agreement states that each of these units are studio units, and maybe piggybacking on Councilmember Morris's question, I know that what Davis Behavioral Health does in nature, and the population they deal with, generally deal with folks who have certain, you know, behavioral health issues and other types of concerns. With these properties being that studio-sized property, did they offer anything about how this property will aid them in the work that they do? Is that something that, I mean, I don't know if we can know that, if that's a question that I'm gonna ask it, because I want to know, but I don't know if that's something that they have to share with us at this time, but that's just a question that I have, like how that is aiding, because wanting to have the direct access, the parking lot, and having it located where it is, which I actually think is great, just wanting to know a little bit more detail about that, and if that's available to us now.
I, I don't have those details, but I think that's a fair question to ask the applicant.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Mayor, I move we open the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and acknowledge that, I did not have to take a vote on that. So at this point, if anyone should like to speak on this one particular item, you're welcome to, once again, step up to the podium, state your name, and go ahead and address your, your concerns. Okay, oh, excuse me.
I'm the applicant, so I don't know if I can speak at the public hearing, or may I not?
Sure, no, this is a good time to do it, before we
My name is Sam Ball, I'm an architect with Assist Community Design Center. We're a nonprofit architecture firm in Salt Lake City that's helping and representing Davis Behavioral Health on this project. So maybe to give you a little bit of background of, of who will be housed in this kind of facility and in this campus. So Davis Behavioral Health is looking to expand the impact they can have on the local Davis County kind of community and the people that they serve in Davis County, and they feel that an effective way to do that is creating more of a centralized campus in this location. And so this, what this first phase is for is to provide, first and foremost, on the, on the, you know, forwardmost street foot, sorry, street-facing building, that would be for operations for their existing facilities, but also would provide kind of class, classrooms and offices to provide additional services and counseling services and kind of mental health, well-being, support groups. And then the housing is to house Davis Behavioral Health clients, whether that's current clients or past clients. We would like to stress that this is a permanent supportive housing project, and so just because somebody maybe doesn't, no longer needs as intensive services from Davis Behavioral Health, they can continue to live there so long as they meet kind of the requirements that Davis Behavioral Health has put forward. It is a, so it would be staffed full-time, so twenty-four seven, they will have Davis Behavioral staff on site, they will have case managers there, so it's, it's, it's quite a bit more robust than a typical apartment building. We have quite a bit of supportive services. We are also, we're improving the bus stop, most of these residents would most likely ride the bus, and there's a bus stop on site there that's being expanded. We're trying to focus the development also on the, you know, the site development is really focused on the creek, and trying to connect residents with nature, with creek, trying to further kind of, you know, make the housing facility and complex a participant in the actual healing process and mental rehabilitation process. So just to respond to some of the questions that were made, so this is a conceptual phased plan. As you can see, there's three phases, three main phases that will be happening on the project. The, the first two buildings will be happening relatively soon, and then the other phases will, will come on, will, will be proposed and designed as Davis Behavioral Health sees the need for that. So currently, you know, this is, this is a first for Davis Behavioral Health, developing a housing complex this big. They do have housing facilities scattered throughout Davis County that are smaller, but this would be kind of one of their larger facilities, and so they need, they need to kind of gauge what the, what the need might be. The connection to the back parking, so for the first phase and the second phase, we are including, so all of the parking that's required for the development per Leyton City zoning, I believe, is onsite, but then for the third phase, if that third phase ever does come to fruition, there is, we've gone through a shared parking kind of calculation with Leyton City to determine, you know, if we can share the parking, because, because Davis Behavioral Health, through the years of experience there, that back parking lot that they have there remains empty most of the time anyways, and so they'd like to kind of share that parking there. It's also required, as we get more buildings on site, it's required for a fire circulation and kind of having fire access to the, to the full site. We can no longer have a dead-end fire access if we, when we do those future buildings. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council or mayor may have about the facility and complex.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that, appreciate the, the additional information. So Davis Behavioral Health is, is planning on retaining ownership of the residential multifamily, and they'll be the, the landowner, and they would have tenants that would be living in there. I guess my, one of my questions is, you mentioned that this is permanent housing for Davis Behavioral Health, well, there's how many units here?
There's sixty in this, the first phase, and then
Okay.
The total project is a hundred and eighty units.
I'm trying to find the concept, I, I like the, I mean, it's something I haven't really had seen before much, so I definitely think it's, it's cutting-edge. I guess my, I'm curious about the use of the mixed-use zone with residential multifamily that's owned by the owner of the entire property. My guess is that the people who live there would fill up pretty quick, pretty quick on sixty units, and then it's, it's just kind of like a regular apartment complex in any other area of the city? And I guess my question is, would that be proper in another area of the city to do that if it wasn't for a good use, like Davis Behavioral Health, it was just some landowner who wanted to put a bunch of apartments and say, well, this is permanent housing for this particular subset, and maybe they wouldn't be able to do it at, in their zone? Do you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, so the term permanent supportive housing is, is a term, just to clarify, that it's not transitional housing.
Yeah.
So this is not, you know, transitioned, these are, these people can stay as long as they would like to. Davis Behavioral Health does see them most likely phasing and, and moving out as kind of their, their conditions better. And I think the, the real difference here is that, so Davis Behavioral Health has found that a majority of their most vulnerable clients or clients that are going through mental health crises have a very difficult time finding stable, affordable, and supportive housing.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is intended to help those individuals through the rehabilitation process. There is supportive services in the building, but then also residents could cross the creek, could go down the street to the clinic, and could go back and forth, could go to the, the mixed-use, or the, the building that's on the front of the property, and that's really why the mixed-use kind of zone was targeted, is because Davis Behavioral Health is looking to expand their services and also have a very kind of close proximity to services on a daily basis and a very frequent basis.
But in your, in your, I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
In the best-case scenario, someone goes into Davis Behavioral Health, having an issue, they're given this permanent housing, and then the hope is that they leave?
So I wouldn't say the hope is that they leave, it's a case-by-case basis, right? So, so because some individuals may need to be housed here for the, for, for a long time, for long-term, and some may not, right? And so that's why the property is so large, is to, in the future, if those sixty units, they find that those are filling up relatively quickly, then they can have future buildings to, to kind of accommodate that need. And they, they already have some experience with their housing, so they have a housing program already. It's, you know, duplexes and, and individual homes that are kind of scattered throughout the, throughout the county and, and the city also. And they find, so they have a crisis management center that deals with transitional housing and temporary housing for people who have a crisis, but feel that they could get back on their feet relatively quickly. And so this would just be kind of another, I would say, another tool for Davis Behavioral to kind of address the housing.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to seem like transitional housing and just another, another name for it.
Yeah.
Right? Do you know the conditions that, that you're gonna place on these people? I mean, do you have, you said you, you do this kind of sporadically throughout other jurisdictions and maybe throughout a city. How, how do you typically govern whether they stay or whether they, they go?
So Davis Behavioral Health, you know, I can't speak entirely to their operations, they're not here as the owner, but from what we're aware of in their operations, they offer, so these individuals that are, that are housed in their facilities have to abide by their rules and regulations, have to be seeking to get better in whatever they're, they're, they're facing, right? Whether it's a mental health crisis, other addictions that maybe come along with that, they have to be progressing, and they have to be checking in with their case managers on a regular basis, right? So that's, that's, you know, what we're aware of, those are kind of the conditions that Davis Behavioral Health would, would impose on those individuals.
I'm gonna ask one question, and I don't want it to come crossed in any sort of unfeeling way.
Mm-hmm.
But we, we've had lots of discussions with our, our chief of police about a vast majority of our calls, not the vast majority, but a good percentage of our police calls are folks who are having mental health problems, and we've seen videos that have been just really difficult to watch with people who really need services, really need help. And from a land use perspective, would you consider that folks who are in this type of situation, that they would potentially be requiring disproportionately more of our police to be in this neighborhood than in other areas? Or do you think that this is a situation where they would have gone past that point, and that they would be placed in permanent housing because they had met criteria that felt that they could live there permanently?
Yeah, I would believe the latter.
Okay.
So this is, again, permanent supportive housing, at this stage, they've already gone through the crisis stage, they've already been in, whether it's an intake process from Davis Behavioral Health, or an intake process from another community partner, they've already been through the intake process.
Okay.
They've been either diagnosed, or they've been, you know, they're currently going through a counseling kind of program, and so I would say it's more the latter than, than the first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Council?
Just to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Bloxum's point, I would also ask, which it sounds like this is what you're saying, but because these units would be staffed already, and you said that there's twenty-four seven staff at these facilities, it sounds as though if there were a situation or crises or whatnot, that they would have the resources necessary to kind of handle that, whereas many of, of what we saw in video were folks having such, having episodes in a place that was not able to really handle what they were, what they were going through. Is that what you would, I mean, am I expressing that properly?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would, I would be careful to think of this as an institutional facility, it's not an institutional facility or an institutional use, right? It's, it's a residential use. These are apartment buildings that these individuals will pay a flat rate to Davis Behavioral Health for them to stay there, while it's a very reduced rate, right, that's affordable to them. I would say it's, it's not like an institutional facility where these people are maybe kept, you know, kept there and not allowed to leave, you know, they would, they'd be free to leave as, as they can, but yes, there are quite a bit of supportive services onsite, such as, you know, they offer helping them with medication management, they help them with case, case management services that include also employment services. There are also offices and spaces within the building for other community partners to come in and offer services to the residents there to kind of facilitate that rehabilitation.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, I'm good about, you guys know me, I mean, I want to get all your answers out, or questions, I mean.
I'll, I'll reserve the right to make a motion, if that'll help you. I just want to say thank you. I've been, the council knows openly, critical of the mixed-use zone, because I think it's used in the wrong ways a lot of times. Some of our main thoroughfares, main roads, arterial roads, when it just turns into just bedrooms, just housing. So I think this is a unique use of it, but I think it's a good, good place for it in providing vital services, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And pass that on to Davis Behavioral Health, if you will.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you, you're very knowledgeable in their business, you helped answer a lot of questions and concerns, so they were lucky to have you represent them.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, I'll bring this back to you for action. We will not close the public hearing, because we have another item on the agenda for our public hearing, but I'd like to go ahead and act upon these individually, so would someone make a motion on this first item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 25-17 and Ordinance 25-09.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the rezone request. So with that, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote. I'll start down here with Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloxum?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
Member Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. It's unanimous. Let's go ahead and move on now to item number B, which is a rezone request and a concept plan for a development agreement at Hobbs Creek Villas, PRUD. So, once again, Weston Apolloni will be presenting the items to us.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and counsel. The proposed development, before you tonight, contains 13.38 acres and is within an area identified in the sensitive lands area. The property is located west of Highway 89, approximately 3265 north, and has a small amount of frontage on Hobbs Creek Drive. The proposed development site is currently zoned RS, which is identified from the zoning map here. The applicant, Adam Anderson, is requesting, is representing Goldcrest Homes and is requesting the rezone of the subject property. And this PRUD development would be proposing to have 27 single-family residential units, which include eight attached single-family units that can be considered as twin homes. The PRUD ordinance allows for a maximum of 30% of the PRUD development to be attached. The city has been working with the applicant, both through geological and geotechnical aspects of the subject property, in addition to require a concept plan as outlined in both the sensitive land ordinance and the PRUD ordinance. The final layout of the concept plan is designed to address and mitigate the geotechnical issues that were identified on the subject property. The general plan identifies this property as a neighborhood residential designation. This designation allows for the R110 zone with a PRUD overlay within this area. The general plan states that the use, this is a page out of the general plan from the appendix, which identifies the neighborhood residential designation, and then to the opposite side, highlighting R110 PRUD as one of the applicable zones in that area. I know that's a lot of text, but just kind of taking a snippet from information from the general plan, which identifies, the general plan states that the use of the planned residential unit development, PRUD overlays, are encouraged to be provided for creative community design with open space amenities, flexibility in lot size, diversity of housing types, and use for clustering developments to protect sensitive land areas and other desirable open space features. And I would say that the PRUD is highly applicable in this specific area because it is in a sensitive lands. It allows for more flexibility in the placement of the homes and to protect the sensitive land areas. This is just an analysis of our existing zoning and the densities that are permitted. So I just want to explain what you're looking at here. The first chart that's on top is our single-family residential zones and the base density that would be permitted within those zones. And if those zones were obtained a PRUD overlay, the density that could be allowed. Now, that density is up to 40%. That's not just automatically granted. It's granted through very specific things that are identified in the code, and there's a specific process for that. The property currently is zoned RS, so it's identified as existing zoning, and so the base density right now currently would be 2.5 units per acre. The proposed zone is going to an R110 PRUD. That was the applicant requesting that. And the proposed density is 2.01 units per acre. This has come from a lot of back and forth with the geotechnical and geological reports and identifying how best this property could be developed. Now, when we look at density, we look at the holistic property. We take all of the acreage. There's a lot of acreage on this ground that can't be developed. And so one might look at it and say, well, you're not even considering the other components of that. So just to give you that scope, the proposed density based on just the buildable area would be 4.16 units per acre, which is also still within the realm of what the R110 PRUD would allow. In doing an analysis of what those density bonuses would be required, this development would be meeting those density bonuses. Both the PRUD and sensitive land ordinances require that the application submit a concept plan and be reviewed by staff with recommendations from the Planning Commission and City Council. The concept plan consists of 19 single-family detached building pads and eight attached single-family building pads instead of the traditional lots for detached single-family homes. Each home will be constructed on a building pad with the location surveyed on the final plat. These types of homes are also known as patio homes, where the homeowner owns the footprint of their home and possibly limited common area around their home. The property surrounding their home is recorded as common area and is maintained by the homeowners' association. This design is a direct result of the geological and geotechnical work that has been done. The streets that traverse through the PRUD development is a 39-foot public right-of-way with the cul-de-sacs being private streets. Now, I do want to just clarify with that 39 feet, that is a public road, which is this road that connects from the existing subdivision out to Hobbs Creek. That is not a smaller roadway. The pavement of that road will be just as big as any other single-family residential road we have. Where it gets shortened up is the decrease in a sidewalk on one side, and the park strips are eliminated to allow for this shorter road. This is what we do on hillside developments where there is, so as you can see, there would be a sidewalk on this side here. And this is a standard road for hillside developments where there is grades and hills that would require a shorter or a more narrow road. And so, again, the pavement that vehicles travel on is not decreased. The proposed PRUD development will have 28.25% of usable open space for the residents. The minimum required is 12%. There are areas within the development that will have unbuildable and unusable open space, which will be required to remain in its natural state with native plants, which equals 51.46% of the subject property. However, these do not count towards the required 12% open space. These are included, excuse me, these areas include over 10% of, these areas include slopes over 10% in the western and northern portions of the development, which have geological and technical features such as slopes greater than 30%. The usable open space will contain private amenities. For the residents of the PRUD, these private amenities include pickleball courts, a pavilion with seating and gathering areas, a walking trail, and creative connections from home to each of the amenities. The applicants have been working with the city and the city's parks and engineering department to include a future public trail through the PRUD development that will provide an important connection for the Cays Creek Trail. That trail connection will be through here. With the proposed, the trail currently terminates at the applicant's west property line. With this proposed development, the trail will wind through the proposed open space area, open space area of the development and connect with Hobbs Creek, where the trail travels under Highway 89, just north of 2700. And the trail will eventually connect to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. So there is a connection that goes under 89 that connects to, that will, a future connection to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. The city and the applicant have been working with the applicant's geotechnical engineer and the city's third-party geotechnical engineers to identify and mitigate geotechnical and geological issues on the property. Excuse me, I should have gone through these amenities. So these are the pickleball courts and the pavilions and the benches and receptacles that they plan on having. And then I'll just quickly go through this. I apologize, my slides are a little out of order. So these are just the proposed elevations. They do plan on having additional elevations, but these are just conceptual, and as the subdivision continues to go through preliminary and final, they'll have future elevations that will be in addition to these. The items explored within the geotechnical and geological issues dealt with fault scarp locations, slope stability, unstable soils, groundwater, and liquefaction. There are points of the subject property that have been identified as unbuildable. A fault scarp is located on the east side of the proposed development. That's identified in yellow. A no-build easement of 35 feet in width will be recorded to prevent the fault scarps from being built on. This is at the direction of the geological and geotechnical engineers. The western and northern portions of the subject property have slopes greater than 30%, which is what you can identify in red here, which may cause some slope instability, which are not allowed to be constructed on, with the exception that the trail connection that runs through here, there will be a pavilion that would be placed on here, as this is flatter area. As mitigation for slope stability, the 27 proposed building pads are to be located outside of the 30% slope area. In addition, only water-wise landscaping can be implemented in the common areas surrounding the building pads and other common areas. This will lessen the impact of irrigation and that the irrigation can have on adjacent sloped areas. The landscaped common areas that will require greater irrigation are located away from the slopes and closer to Hobbs Creek Drive, where the subject property is flat. So I'll just identify that. Thought I had the, let me go back here. So this is a grass area here, but that's the only grass Everything else is identified as water-wise. The final plans will also require a note stating the foundation drains are required for all below-grade basements. Additional notes will reference geotechnical and geological hazards studies for both the applicant's geotechnical engineer and the city's third-party engineer. A development agreement has accompanied the rezone request of the subject property and includes a few of significant issues that were a part of the development. I'll just go through a few of those. The front setbacks are established similar to the most of the PRUDs we see, which is 12 feet for the living area, 20 feet for the garage. Side yard setbacks have a minimum of 10 feet between building pads. Maximum number of residential units is limited to 27. The agreement requires the developer construct a number and type of amenities as shown in the conceptual plan and as we discussed. The construction of the city's Cays Creek Trail, per the city's trail specifications, is in the location shown on the concept plan. That is a 10-foot wide trail with two-foot sides, and it's a 20-foot easement for the trail. Site grading and development, which includes minor mass grading of the site and constructing the retaining walls, will be required to be consistent with the conceptual plan. Final plan requirements with regards and accepted geotechnical reports by Leighton City are noted, as well as lot grading limitations and private utilities are located outside the public streets. There are requirements for deed restrictions for each building pad. There are also requirements to, there's also a requirement to establish a homeowners' association in perpetuity. In addition to the homeowners' association, as part of the CCNRs, it will state that the area is identified in the sensitive lands areas and state the criteria in which it needs to be maintained. On March 11th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted a 3 to 2 to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to approve the rezone with concept plan. Request from RS Residential Suburban to R110 PRUD Single Family Residential Planned Residential Unit Development Zone. In addition to the Planning Commission, in addition, the Planning Commission voted a 3 to 2 to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council to approve the development agreement. The two commissioners that voted not to adopt the Ordinance 2508 and Resolution 2516 stated their reasonings, which include the geotechnical report for the development agreement should include radon testing of the existing soil and the city, excuse me, radon testing of the existing soil, and the city should require a traffic study to be completed when possible with possible impacts to the proposed development within this traffic area. The staff's response is that random, excuse me, radon is regulated through a voluntary compliance section of the 2021 International Residential Code, the IRC, and not through geotechnical or geological studies. Appendix F of the IRC, Radon Control Methods, states it is not a mandatory unless adopted by the state construction code, which is not the case in the state of Utah. Table AF 101.1 of the IRC also includes a list of counties in Utah with the high radon potential, of which Davis County is not listed. Now, that being said, in discussing this with the applicant, he has stated that as they excavate basements, if they identify radon, the homes will be mitigated. The mitigation for radon will be added to the homes during the construction process. Per the city's design standards and guidelines, the city engineer has determined that the traffic impact study is not required based on the proposed development, not generating more than 100 trips during peak hour. Staff supports the Planning Commission's recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, counsel, do you have questions regarding this item before we open it up for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
You mentioned they were patio homes, and now I'm hearing basement. So it's a mix?
You know, actually, that's a good catch, Commissioner Thomas. That was the discussion that I had, is as they excavate for basements, they would test for radon. That's a good question for the applicant.
No, I didn't get an answer there.
Single family. Is it single family, twins, which ones?
They're single family. Yes.
But I heard that they were patio homes, which means no basement.
Right.
No, and then you said they're digging out basements.
Right. So this is the conversation I had with the developer. He said as they dig out basements, they test for radon. So that would be a good clarification for them if they're going to do radon testing on these, because you're right, patio homes do not have basements.
You still didn't answer my question. Okay, am I not asking the right question? Oh, he doesn't know. Okay. Because I hear they're going to do patio homes, which means no basement. And then I hear you say they're going to do basements, so that's not a patio home.
It is a good question.
Okay, I get it. You don't know. That's fine. I don't know either.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Weston. I have a couple of questions. One, kind of piggybacking on that, just looking at the pictures of the elevations, it looks like, they don't look like they're one level. Is that just the way that they're designed to look like they're not one level?
They're two-story units.
Okay, so again, patio homes in my estimation were not.
You can have a patio home that's two stories.
That's two-story, okay. So in regard to the PRUD, and I appreciate you showing the slides with, you know, what the acreage would be with the different zones. That's helpful. But without me having to do the math tonight, could you estimate how many homes would be able to be placed on this lot currently with the current zone, so the RS, and then with the R110 without the PRUD? Do you have that information?
I don't, but if you can give me a minute, I'll get it for you.
Yeah, I can give you a minute. Because a lot of what, a lot of what we've heard from the residents, and let me just state to the residents, thank you for reaching out to us a month ago before we even knew that all of this was coming, which is probably why many of us didn't have much to respond to you on, because we, the information hadn't come to us yet, as well as the minutes from the meeting and all of those things. So there was a lot of information that we didn't have readily available to us at the time when you reached out, which has also led to us being able to have this meeting pushed to today as opposed to having it last week when you all would not. pushed to today as opposed to having it last week when you all would not have been able to be present, and some of us also would not have been able to be present. But, a lot of the emails and the phone calls have been about density and wanting to maintain low density, and this, generally when we see PRUDs, as Councilmember Bloxham will, will state, generally when we see PRUDs, it's an opportunity to increase density, sometimes for good reasons, sometimes maybe not, but it would be really helpful to understand the actual units that would be able to be built on what currently is there versus what's being proposed, and then also what's being proposed without the PRUD. Do you have that?
Yeah, and this is, this is really academic, because there's a lot of ground here that has 30% slope, right? So, there really wouldn't be developable area in a lot of this. So, if we were talking about more flat ground that could function, you're looking around 35 homes-ish, 30 maybe, and that's, that's minusing roads. So, again, it's the shape of the property and, and, but you're probably about 30 to 35 homes.
So, I think the, I think the crux of the questions probably from the residents and also from myself at least, is for that buildable area, if it were to remain at the R1S, knowing what, what the number of homes would be able to be built would be useful. I do see that with this proposed zone at the bottom here, that less than two units per acre on what the buildable area is, is what I'm assuming that is for? Is that correct? That this 2.0 units per acre is based on what area is buildable?
That's right.
Okay, and so that is...
So, let me, let me clarify. So, the 2.1, or excuse me, the 2.01 is the density for the entire project.
Gotcha.
The 4.16 would be if we just counted the buildable area in and of itself.
Okay. And so, this 27 is based on this 4.16?
Yeah.
Okay, so that should probably be red outlined. Just because what's red outlined, generally you draw your attention to that, which is saying this is what, what we should look at. But what is being proposed is actually 4.16 on what's buildable.
So, so how we...
Because that's what's available.
Yeah, that's fair. How we classify density is the entire acreage. So, that's, that's why that one, the 2.01, that's why that's highlighted, is because that's the number we're going off of. But, because there's so much ground that's not being developed, it's easy to look at it as that doesn't count. That's, that's not how we do density calculations, and so I wanted to provide the second number, the 4.16, but holistically, the density is 2.01.
Okay, and then the next question I'll ask, and then I'll give others some, some time, I have a lot of notes here, is with the PRUD, there's a, there's a distinction even in the verbiage that you provided, that the units, the density can be added and that the units are clustered around, you know, some amenities and things of that nature. Based on this picture, this L1.2, the amenities are those in the front of the unit around that grassy area, so the pickleball court and the shuffleboard is here in the front, correct?
Here, there's a pavilion here, and then there's a pavilion, excuse me, a trellis here. There's a trellis here, and then a pavilion here, and then grass here.
Okay, so not clustered around those amenities as a lot of our other PRUDs have been in the past, where there's a central focus on the open space and what part of the PRUD you get to enjoy as far as your amenities go. But in this case, those amenities are not centralized to the homes, they're on the outskirts. I'm assuming this L14 would still remain, the vegetation that we, we see presently? And then on this L13 where this pavilion is?
Yes.
Would this be only for the residents of this particular property?
Correct.
And so, even though it's a pavilion and it's accessible by a trail, it would not be able to be used by anyone but the folks in this particular property? So, not the residents who live off of 2850 and all of the other roads behind, but only for those in this particular area?
Correct, it would be part of their, the, this development, their, part of their HOA. And as far as the, the open space and how it's, how it's been gathered, it, this really has been a focus of the geological and geotechnical work and wanting to mitigate a lot of the ground and making sure that it was water-wise and done appropriately, and trying to position the homes in, in the best way possible so the site could be developed without, without having to put in amenities that have a lot of water-wise, or excuse me, a lot of water usage. So, the amenities were not necessarily the focus on having them in the center, it was more focusing on making sure the geological and technical issues were resolved and then putting the amenities in with there. That being said, they still meet the PRUD requirement of being within 900 feet of all the homes.
Have you seen the geotech report? And it does meet our standards?
It does. There's been a lot of geotechnical back and forth on that, yeah.
Okay, I know that there's more questions, I'll save my question till the end.
Okay, I want to go back to the radon. So, they are gonna test for it. I'm playing a lawyer now.
Yeah.
Okay, not just if they find it, they're gonna test for it.
Conversation I have with the applicant.
So, that, and then on the water-wise, in the city, a lot of the problems that we have with slides is not in the front yard, it's in the backyard, because they don't mitigate where the water runs. It just runs, and this looks like there's one, two, three, six or seven homes that might, I don't know the term, the water's gonna run downhill and it's gonna go to the 30%. So, what do you do to stop that? You say mitigation, I don't get it. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Mitigating identifies the, the issues that will come up on the property or potentially come up, and finding solutions to rectify them. And so, part of that is limiting how much water is actually being distributed on the property, which is why the majority of that development is gonna be on a drip system. There's not gonna be large flowing water coming off of people's backyards. The backyard doesn't exist here, it's, it's an open space area managed by the HOA.
And who governs that?
The, the HOA does.
Just like they have to govern the use of the pickleball court.
Well, I don't care about a pickleball court, but I care about water, you know? And HOA, I've never lived in one for obvious reasons.
The HOA would be required to be maintained or be managed by a professional HOA.
Okay, so, this isn't just gonna be, it's okay, I mean, it's, there's gonna be some direction, there's gonna be some, more than just, oh, you can't do this.
Correct.
Okay, cause that scares me, because, you know, they're... And just one last question. We had a gentleman years ago, he worked for the city, bought a home, drilled it, did all the seismic stuff, and the home still fell or moved, and they condemned it. So, who's liable for that?
I'm gonna turn to our city attorney to answer that, but I will tell you, before, before I have you answer, that there is significant amount of back and forth that goes on between city staff and a third-party geotechnical engineer and the developer's geotechnical engineer to vet these issues, to make sure that, that the issues that are gonna cause problems are mitigated.
Good.
You ready for this?
I've been born ready for this.
It depends.
That's what I figured.
No, seriously. There are two, there's too many factors to speculate.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, so it's just...
So, you just...
In that situation you're referencing, I can tell you that there was a neighbor that went out of town and left a sprinkler on for a week.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, yeah. Yeah, I forgot you lived by him.
Okay, I'm sure there's additional questions, Councilman Bloxham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate Weston, you know, you're in the firing line here, you just work for the city, you know, we asked you to do the work, you're not the, you're not the applicant, so I appreciate you sharing the information in a, can sometimes be a hostile environment, so I appreciate that. I, you know my feelings of PRUDs, I've been very clear about that. And I appreciated the email that we shared with one another where I asked you pretty pointed questions about my feelings about PRUDs and how I feel like they've just become kind of swallowing up the general rule, and that they're almost feel from the development community as some sort of entitlement, you know, that they're entitled to this because why not, right? It's in the code. And so, you know my feelings about that. But I would appreciate you just maybe explaining your position or the staff's position on, I like to say that PRUDs should be the exception, not the rule, and what they've become is they've become the rule. And you had a nice answer to that, so I just would appreciate you providing that, maybe to the residents and to the council, cause I think it was, I, you didn't, you didn't try to dodge the question, and I appreciate the professionalism that you provided with me in responding to that, and I think it would be helpful to the discussion.
Yeah, thank you. So, PRUDs, a PRUD development really should just be one of the tools of development. And, and you're right, we do see a lot of them, we have started seeing a lot of them, and there's a lot of reasons for that. And this is a tool for us and for the developer. The developer uses it a tool to say, prices increased, I need to get more density, and for this to work out, maybe I can make this work and create a nice development. And for the city, we can look at it, especially in this type of area, and say, you know, when a development comes, there are sensitive lands that we need to address, there are, there are delicate areas we need to protect. We have seen lots of issues in our city, and we want to make sure that those issues don't happen. And so, the PRUD allows us that flexibility to say, these setbacks need to maybe not be so tight. It allows us to say, these people shouldn't have, in this specific neighborhood, maybe not have a backyard where they could have issues unintentionally leaving a hose on and, and having a hill wash away because there's so much sensitivity in this area. And so, let's use those tools to create a way to regulate it and say, there can be development in moderate ways. Hopefully that addresses...
I appreciate that. I think it's a balance that we aren't quite hitting right now in my, my estimation, but I appreciate the response. You mentioned that there were deed restrictions. Can you itemize what those are and what that plans to be?
Yeah, the deed restrictions will really just call out that this is a sensitive lands area. One of the things that we've been trying more and more as staff is to make sure that people are aware, not just the first home buyer, but everyone after that. And so, that deed restriction is intended so that when someone purchases the home, that's up in front of them to say, hey, there's some issues here. Not to say that it's a bad thing, but people should know what they're getting involved with, and so we're trying to make that as clear as possible.
Yeah. Does the land, the development to the south, is that have, I mean, I've obviously driven by this lots of times, but does the land to the south, you know, that older development, does that have similar geotechnical issues? Do you know?
I couldn't address the geological issues that they've...
Is it have, I mean, I guess I'm, it, it looks, to me, when you look at those things, if you were just looking at a map like we did, I mean, it looks like this is how we envisioned it to be, and this is how we've allowed it to become.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like from a policy standpoint.
I, I will say it's similar ground, we haven't done a specific geotech to, to identify those specific issues, but yeah, I mean, I would suspect that similar things could occur there.
Okay. Councilman Roberts?
I'm gonna piggyback on Councilmember Thomas, press you a little more on water. Water goes downhill. I, I appreciate the work that's gone into the landscape, keeping that in mind and, and reducing the amount of water just to prevent that. What I'm worried about is 30 years down the road, maybe we'll have our, our next biggest winter, and we saw a lot of issues two years ago when we started our spring runoff about this time of year. What, what is in the, can you, can you talk about where water would go if it runs off? If it's melting off of roofs? If it's on, I mean, water-wise landscape can mean a lot of things, it can mean hard surfaces where it runs off, it could mean, you know, gravel where it percolates into the soil. Can you talk a little bit about where water would go just from a weather perspective?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I actually would lean on Steve, our city, our public works director. I, I'm not an engineer, and so identifying where that snow would go and wouldn't go and how it flow, if you wanted him to address that. But what I will say is, we're at concept, and that is something that we take very serious, and we want to make sure that, that the water is directed in an appropriate way and that the buildings are in a safe location.
That's fair, and that brings up another question, actually procedural question. What, when will this come to us again? How many times? What other processes?
You'll see it again at preliminary and at final, because it is a sensitive lands area.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, one other question, you talked about the geotech, and I appreciate having our own geotech that, that works with both of them, so we can get kind of a second opinion, two opinions. You talked about mitigation, but if I missed it, I'm sorry, the, the 30% of the property, or sorry, the, it's about 51% of the property that's 30% grade. Is there anything in mitigation there that would improve from what it is now? The stability of it, the drainage of it? Just kind of to prevent something from moving in the future?
That's something I would have to look further into the, the geotechnical reports, not that I'm aware of off the top of my head.
Knowing that...
Excuse me.
Knowing that if this moved forward today, I'd, I'd love to see something that kind of improved that. I know it doesn't count towards their open space in a PRUD, but if we can, it'd give me a little more peace of mind if we were to approve something like this, that it's preventing something from happening in the future on that ground, whether it's landscape or, I don't know, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, obviously, but...
And that could be something that's been examined, I, I just don't know the details.
I didn't see it in the notes, so...
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, and I understand that, you know, this is a rezone request, not necessarily approval of conception or anything like that, but in reviewing the packet, I do know that it, it also addressed the, the public trail, and obviously in this concept plan here, you do have the trail coming up out of the, the Hobbs Pond area, and the trail pushed to the south side of this property. And I did read our parks planners' concerns there and hope that the, the trees would remain there. There's a lot of nice big evergreen trees that, and looking at this concept plan, I don't see how you could preserve those, knowing that you have to have a 10-foot wide trail, but a 20-foot easement. Is there any possibilities to work with the developer to maybe shift that to maybe the north side? I do understand it's all, it's critical to the access to go underneath Highway 89 to connect with our, our Bonneville Shoreline Trail. However, that connection is down the road. It, it's far enough down the road that I don't think that really comes into play here. So, is that a possibility?
This is a good question for Joe Ellin, our parks planner, and I apologize not having specific details on this. This is something that's been a part of the general plan and detailed where that trail would go. I know a lot of thought and consideration has been brought out to that, and a good question for the developer, if there's room to even move that to the north. My understanding is that this has been vetted and thought through. If, if there's an option to move it, we would need to talk to the applicant.
Okay, or is there something we can do to help preserve, I guess, the vegetation that's along there? Cause I think all of us have dealt with the education of trees lately and the importance of those, and I know that this is a huge concern as well. And I just, you know, I would hate to see those have to take out, and I, and I did read Joe Ellen's concerns, and she did say that that was her concern and that she would like to see them remain.
Yes, I, I think that's a fair point, Madam, Madam Mayor.
I know that there might be additional questions, I, let me just bring up one more thing. I am concerned about the fault line, because in one of your slides, you showed where that fault line came through, and yet I believe there's already an existing home that is built right in line with that fault line, and that concerns me.
I got it in here somewhere.
Yeah, that yellow line? It seems like there's a home there to the south of that boundary that has a home on that fault line.
I, I can't speak to that, but I can speak to, this is, this is part of the geotechnical report that, and the identifying marker of where they found that fault line.
Not that I want to belabor this at all, cause I know, you know, we need to get on to public comment here, but... to public comment here, but the concerns as far as the, for lack of better terms, just the impact of the water and the runoff, and how there could be erosion existing already. I did actually go to the area, and I did see where there was slough off to the south of an existing line, as well as right next to our trail. It looks like there's a very large open trench area that seems to be part of a, you know, what I would consider a geotechnical concern there. So I think that those are some things we've got to look at here on this, on this particular issue. But I know Councilman Morris has some questions, so let me move on to him.
I'll make a note of that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, maybe clarify or help. You mentioned, well, let me say this. This council, we didn't work on this. Councils before, planning commissions before, and councils before that worked on sensitive lands ordinance, countless meetings, come up with the rules, and the procedures, and the geotech reports, and having a third party, and checking and double-checking, and we have to see it three times. Has that, are we following the rules?
We are.
Okay. So when you, when you talk to a developer, the landowners, this is what we're going to go through. This is the process. And you're presenting tonight that we've, we're in the process, we're through, we're going through the process, and we don't see anything that's not part of what's been passed by councils before, the ordinances of the city.
Correct. And we're at conceptual phase, so obviously more work needs to be done. And you'll see more work as we, as we keep working forward on this. But we are meeting the ordinance.
Just one quick question. You mentioned geotech and geological reports. What are the geological reports?
They come in together. But the geological, the geotechnical issues, I mean, they specifically will identify the issues that are identified on the property, such as the fault line. But the geological is any soil issues that there's a concern, and how that soil affects the ground of the development.
I just caution us as well. We're not experts. And we can go up and look, and we don't know. We have to trust the experts. And we put a procedure, and we put process, and we put an ordinance in place for this.
That's correct.
And so I appreciate the work that you've done, that staff's done, to get us to this point, at least so that we can have this meeting and listen to the residents. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're about at a point where we need to open it up for public comment. Are you guys good with that? Because I mean, there's, okay, proceed. This is your point to deliberate before we hear the residents.
Yeah, so the question I have is to Councilmember Thomas's point about the homes that are on the backside there. And just wondering, even with the mayor's point about being able to potentially move the trail, or move it however many feet need to be so that the trees and whatnot can be maintained, I'm not sure if the applicant is here, or if the developer is here. But if the developer is here and would like to speak during public comment, I would be interested in knowing, how viable is this development without those six or seven lots in the back? You know, again, not that there's an additional need for the open space for this request, because it's met the requirements, as you already mentioned, Weston. But just seems like it might, that it might make a little, it might ease some of the uneasiness, right, about the slope and whatnot, if maybe that, that back row of homes were not, were not needed, or were not in the plan. And then, my only other question, and this also might be for the developer, is there was a lot of care brought to our attention as to why these homes were being built on a, what did you call it? A, each of these little-
Oh, the patio.
Yeah, but they're being built on a pad-
A pad.
As opposed to a regular development. And perhaps, you know, what would it look like, or what would be the possibility for not having those pads, or maybe having more space in between the homes? Because it seems that the clustering of the homes together has also been a concern. And so again, is 27, I know that 27 is a low number compared to what could have been built, or, you know, with the existing density, or the existing area. But is 27, is that the number that they're at? And I know this is the first time we're hearing it. So if we get more information from the geotechnical studies, and they say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't do this, then that number decreases. But just thinking about it prior to, as a developer, I know that the developer would have thought about, what are the numbers of homes that I can build here versus what I can't? And obviously, 27 is the number that would give the most opportunity, for lack of a better word. But what does it look like if those seven are gone in the back, or if there's some more space between the others in the middle? So I would be interested to hear from the developer on that piece, if there's a number between 15 and 27. What did that look like? And is that something that they're open to? Thanks.
Fair. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and open up our public hearing regarding item number B here on our, our public hearing. So anyone who wished to speak in regards to this, I will caution, or not caution, but request, if possible, that if, if you've had a resident, a neighbor, whatever, that's already stated your position, I hope that you would recognize that we have, we did hear that comment, that it doesn't need to be reemphasized over and over again. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to our residents to be able to address this. And I hate to implement the clock, but we may have to, but let's see how this goes. And let me make one more comment, sorry. If there is someone that wants to speak on behalf of a large majority of you, certainly then I'm open to that, and would give that person ample time to address it. But that's something that I want to make sure is, you know, agreed upon there. So, sir, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Adam Anderson. I am the applicant and developer on this. I thought I could maybe come up and address some of the questions, and if some more come up, might that be a good idea as to address them while we, at this point? Or if you'd like to, I could wait on that, if that works better for you.
You're already at the podium. Go ahead and answer these questions, but please stay around, because once you probably hear from all the residents, I'm sure there's going to be more to address. So go ahead.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the time and effort that's gone into this, your time, effort, and evidence-based review of this. I know there's a lot of elements to this. I appreciate staff, by the way. I don't know if you know this in the background. We've been working through this for two years. There's been a lot of back and forth. We haven't agreed on everything. It's been tough. It's been tough. But the policies you've put in place to get to a concept has taken two years to get here. And they've stuck to their guns on what is required of the city. So whatever you laid out in your code is exactly what we've done. I have three geotechnical engineers, a geologist. I have civil engineers. We were well into six figures on a concept. That's insane. Insane. Now, I understand this is sensitive overland, and so we're cognizant of that, because we talked about liability. I'll tell you who's liable. We're liable. This is the approach we take. Yes, we are. Oh, absolutely.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm going to ask, please, if, and this is just showing respect for one another, please don't have any outbursts. I mean, that, that does not solve anything here. We will give everybody an opportunity to speak, but let's just kind of respect each other's comments here. You do have your freedom here to speak, and that's what we, as a governing body, want to hear.
And there's a reason for this. When those homes, those edge homes fell off on South Mountain two years ago, right about when we started this, they didn't go after the city. They went after the city, the builder, the developer. You put everyone in there. That's what our attorney says he would do. And I know, so we take this as a liable issue. We're not looking for the city to bail us out. When we approached this, it's not, we understand the challenges with this piece of ground. I knew it was a surface water infiltration issue on this ground. I can't just put, I could put R110 on there, plant a bunch of grass, and that thing will still slide off the hill. When our geotechnical, the experts, we had two of them, when they came out, IGS and CMT, when they looked at this, they said, we have slope stability issues. And the challenge with slope stability issues, if you have dry ground, and I empty my hot tub right here on this grass, that's going to slide off, because it creates difference in friction or whatever. I'm not an expert on this stuff. This is what they're telling me. So they said that most imperative thing on this is to control the amount of discharge that's coming from man-made discharge from hydro, like hose, leaving your hose on, leaving your watering excess on your lawn, emptying your hot tub or pool. So the way we approached this, because we had an R100 concept on this, we did. But I would beg anyone to tell me, how can I guarantee that homeowner is not going to leave his hose on? How do I guarantee that? How can anyone guarantee me that that homeowner is not going to drain their pool? If someone can guarantee me and enforce this, I'm happy to do it. Let's look at it. I can't see how to do that. So the approach we took on this, and just like we do on everything, what did the legislative body put in place for us, following as a nation of laws? What do we do? How do we make sure we can put something that's compliant with what the city wants to see? Okay, so I got to control the water. That's number one. I can't have homeowners discharging hoses. And I could put a note on the plat, I could deed restrict it, but that doesn't force anyone to turn down their sprinklers if their lawn's dying. That doesn't force anyone to discharge their hot tub in an approved area. I can't control that. And so the only thing I can do as a developer is try to say, how can we do this through site plan to control the amount of water that's going on the surface of this ground for safety purposes? And so what I can do is I can cluster these, by the way, these are, these do have basements, they have foundations. And the reason the foundations are packed in there like that is it helps create slope stability. These basements do a couple of things. They provide another layer of living, but they also provide some stability with that ground from sliding down the hill. So there's more thought in this than just, we throw a pretty picture together and see if you guys like it. This is, again, this has taken two years to get to this point. So those foundations are in that place for a reason. Further, to the west of all that product, we've employed IGS. They're another geotechnical engineer outside of CMT, so we have three different parties looking at this. And they've engineered rockery walls to help provide additional stability. So I'm trying to control the water, surface water, right? That was the number one thing they told me. So safety was number one. Control that. We're doing that. Number two, put the foundations in deep on native soil, so that'll help hold that hillside up. Number three, we engineered rock walls around there to help, again, provide additional stability. So with all those contingencies in there, we came up, what does the city see in this kind of product? And understanding sensitive slopes, we said, that's the most important criteria, is make sure that's adhered to. I didn't say that. That's what the geologists, the geotechnical engineers said. Don't put water on this site, period. Control the water that's on the site, period. That's the way you do practical development. That's thoughtful, that's well-laid out. So what did we do? We take, we open it up, just like we do anything. Okay, well, I got some issues here. I got a fault line, a scar. Now, the 75-foot setback that the state used to require was arbitrary. If you look at the standard now, they say, bring out a geologist and look at each scar. I did a project in Ogden. I had 25-foot setback and 100-foot setback. This one's 35-foot. Because you got to look at the conditions that are in the ground. That's what the experts do. They came out with a backhoe, and there's a big, long line that runs right through that property, and you can see that scar. And the geologist took that, and they took some lab results, and they went and measured it. And they're a lot smarter than I am, but they said, this is what the setback needs to be to be safe. And so taking what the geologist said, what the geotechnical engineer said, we designed the site, looking at what the city said. Purpose and intent for a PRUD. The purpose of the planned residential unit development overlay zone is to encourage imaginative and efficient utilization of land by providing greater flexibility in the location of buildings, on the land, and consolidation of open spaces, and clustering of dwelling units. This is what your PRUD ordinance, first sentence, on purpose and intent. A PRUD, further, a PRUD is intended to allow for diversification of relationship of various uses and structures to the site, and to encourage new and imaginative concepts in the design of neighborhood and housing projects in Lain City. We inherit, we, we heard what you said. This is our guiding principle that we built on as a landowner and developer. We say, we got to see what the city wants to do. And this is what you put in your plane text. This is what you want to do. It said, I need to apply this kind of site plan to make this work on this site. Because if I come in here, copy, paste, copy, paste, copy, paste, what I can tell you is every piece of land is different. And you got to approach it differently. If I just go up there and just mass grade the whole thing, I could do that. 30% is arbitrary. I can build on 30% slope. The state's already looked at that. If I mass grade it, if I bring in a geologist, geotechnical, structural engineers, I can bring in all that kind of manpower, and we can make houses sit on the side of the hill if we want to. It's happened. It does all the time. I drive up from Salt Lake, I see those big things above the, you know, above the, that, whatever that mine is over there. I'm like, man, those things are close to the edge. But experts looked at it. They're still sitting up there. I guess they haven't fallen off yet, but they're, they're right up there, close. And so, I don't know. I think that works, I guess. But, so we can mass grade this, we can get it flatter, we can cut some roads in. But it's a beautiful piece of ground, and this area is gorgeous. And that was the intent and draw of this. It's like, how can we preserve this beauty here without as many, I want to keep as many bulldozers off this site as possible. There'll have to be some, but let's keep the bulldozers off this site, preserve what we have, try to keep those trees around as best we can. There's some fire considerations. We have to cut some trees back for safety purposes, but I think it's a beautiful site. So that's our intent, that's our approach on this. So keeping the water down had to change ownership. I couldn't keep it in private hands and say, do what you want in your backyard, because enforcing that's going to be next to impossible. So I said, well, if it's managed professionally by an HOA, we move the grass, so we're not doing excessive watering on lawn, which takes up a lot of water. Let's push that to the east where it's less susceptible to slide. Do all natural vegetation, control that with very little surface water, and we'll manage that, control that through the HOA. Because then I don't have to worry about the residents leaving their hose on. That's the HOA. They need to manage that. And we can, we got more control over an HOA than we do over individuals in their backyard. So that's a little bit easier to manage. So that's our approach with surface water, and that's how we approached this whole site. The structural elements of the foundations in themselves, that does have some help with the slope stability, in addition to the engineered walls that go around the west side. Further, we talked about, the radon came up. So we do that. Right now, we're doing that in Stansbury. We do a vapor barrier under the foundation or the footings before you do the slab. You can do perforated pipe. This is very cheap to do before you can do the install, by the way. So we're not talking very much money. So it's not a matter of, can we do it? Of course we can do it. That's easy. That's not a problem. So it's harder to do once the concrete's in. That's a lot tougher, but doing a vapor barrier with perforated pipe, and then if you still get signs, you can add a fan to it, an electric fan that can kick on and vacate the radon out of the foundation. But that's very easy to mitigate, so that's no problem. We'll do that. But as far as the trail, we designed this trail, and the way that, I mean, we were told to put the trail there. That was where the trail alignment was. And so it wasn't by our choice. That's where it went. So we tried to work with the city as best we could to get this trail in. And we had a lot of constraints with this trail. A, it had to be 20 feet wide, get that easement in, 10-foot wide, multi-use trail. I can't have it turn too much, because the fire, brush truck can't get up. I can't have it too steep, the brush truck can't get up. So the original one had a bunch of switchbacks. So that's great. A lot of fun on a skateboard, but not so great for the fire truck. So we've had to figure out, and with the help of the city, this is what we came up with, to avoid that very steep incline, and still get the radiuses so you can safely get a fire truck up, or at least a brush truck. I don't think we can get one of those big engines up there, but brush truck was the standard. So that's what we did there. So anyway, that's, that's why the trail looks like that. Moving it, it would take quite a bit of engineering, but I'm not opposed to moving it. Like I said, it's, this is the city trail, not my trail. So we got internal trails, if that's what the city likes to see, is to see it move to the north. Maybe we could do something there. As far as moving things on this, every time I move anything, I could move a house a half a foot to the west, and I have to send it back out to geologists or a geotechnical engineer, and then review it by the civil engineer to make sure all the alignments with the structural, or the infrastructure utilities and stuff still work. So there's a lot to do. It's, again, it's insane with concept. I'm at West Jordan doing a concept right now. It takes me literally three days to put together a concept. And they say, yeah, I like it, or I don't like it. Spending this much time and money to get to this point, just to say, I don't like it. I'm like, whoa, whoa, that's painful. I'm like, whoa, whoa, that's painful, very painful. And, yeah, that's a little bit hard to swallow that one. I, I can do it one week, you don't like it, okay, fine, we can change that, that's no problem. But, to get to this point, after doing this much engineering and time on it, it's, it's hard to say, yeah, I like it. So, I do appreciate an objective, evidence-based evaluation of this. I really do. It means a lot. So, I really do appreciate your time on that. I'll, for purpose of time, and respect that, everyone's time, I'll just go to take a seat if something else comes up. I'm happy to get up and talk more.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to, like, hear from the residents at this time if possible, and then, like I said, perhaps at the end, if there's anything else that you need to address, then, you know, we'll call you back up.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The time is now yours. You guys have been very patient, you've waited several hours in order to get to this point, so I do want to acknowledge that and let you know that we're here to hear you. So, sir, if you could, state your name.
Justin Anderson. I live at 2885 East, 3025 North, right on the corner of Hobbs Creek and 3025. So, just a few things. I know our neighborhood on 3025, a lot of good people, and I don't think any of us are afraid of having additional neighbors in, in the community. However, I think we all have concerns that it doesn't match our community, and it doesn't match the intent of what historically has been done in East Layton. So, I have six points to go over. First off, we are deeply invested in this community. As current homeowners, we are financially and emotionally invested in this. We are not just residents, we are taxpayers, community volunteers, parents, neighbors. We attend the local high schools. We are involved. Now, you've heard the developer argue, they've invested time and money, and I'm not disputing that. However, their investment in doing this came in speculation. They had no idea of, of what they could do. They knew this was zoned differently when they started. And the proper zoning that they wanted was not in place for what they are requesting, and pursued this project knowing it would require a significant rezone in a sensitive area. This is a sensitive land area, and it's geologically active. If you would please look at the handout of that picture, this is on the peninsula that is just south of us. Now, when Layton developed this area, there are seven homes on a very similar area as this. This is less than a, about a little over a year ago, without any development on it, you can see, little bigger than a football-sized piece of property went down this hill. That was without garden hoses, right? That was without a water line break. So, this site is within a sensitive document, documented sensitive land overlay, hasn't changed. And it's been well talked about, that the slopes are over 30%, there's unstable clay soils, and identified fault scarps. And I'll be the first to say, with an unlimited amount of money, you could probably develop anything, right? But, what's led here today is that there's a certain amount of money in, in selling this property, and I will admit, this is a nice piece of property. However, it has challenges in being developed, and I believe they're trying, whether, I don't know, developer, staff, whoever, is trying to pull everything in the book to try to make this happen. And it's just risky. Okay? Layton has had a history of slides. You know that. But, there's also been slides, Draper, North Salt Lake, Ogden, and guess what? These were all sites that they had geotechnical reports saying it was fine, every single one of them. And I can talk to you about the one in Ogden, right? It wasn't the developer that got sued, it wasn't even the geotechnical engineer. It was the home builder, who was Mike Schultz, the Speaker of the House. In a 2015 article, when this was concerning another development in Layton, East Ridge, this is a quoted state geologist, Greg Bukelman, said, "Most landslides in Utah are reactivations of older slides. There is no sure thing in landslide prevention." Again, no sure thing. "Once a slope begins to fall, it only stops when resistance equals the driving force." This area is geologically active. Approving this rezone in sensitive land comes with a known high risk. Again, this development, I believe, doesn't follow Layton City's general plan, at least historically hasn't. I know there's been some changes, it sounds like, that's happened recently, that I wished our community would have known about before, so we could provide comment on. The general plan clearly defines this as a low-density residential zoning. A P R U D can only increase density when there's clear community benefit, such as, again, meaningful open space, thoughtful clustering and connectivity. And again, this is my opinion, these look all packed on there. And you're left with 30% slopes. I just don't think that is meaningful and thoughtful. And I would dare say, the residents of my street feel the same way. Also, I feel, you know, approving this request, in my opinion, would ignore Layton's own general plan, the very blueprint meant to guide responsible growth. Historically, this has not been the case, and I know, development is important, we don't want to downplay development or, or rights, but responsible development is important because it affects everybody's life. I believe this P R U D packs all the homes along the eastern edge, not clustering around a central open space. You know, we've talked about, a lot about geotechnical issues and water runoff. Please look at the hard surface that's being introduced right here. All the rooftops, all the roads, all the curb and gutter, that water accounted for, maybe it is. I don't know, I don't see one detention area on here. And, the other thing, and I'll get to, and I'll talk more about the H O A, is, in an H O A, who is gonna be responsible for the water feeding that? Are they gonna be around if something happens and it freezes and a line breaks in the middle of winter? I'm sure the city's gonna be called in to take care of it, but is that gonna be enough time to keep that hillside from going down? The open space consists of steep slopes and fragmented, in my opinion, unusable areas, not a functioning park or gathering space or a community space. The proposed trail now completely will surround my home with public access. Living on that corner, I've got Hobbs Creek Drive, I got 3025 North, I got 2885 East, and now, we're throwing a trail right in, in a residential lot, having public's access completely surrounding my lot, gives me absolutely no privacy. And the other thing, in the planning commission that was talked about, is, that is UDOT property right there, and there is a plan to put a parking lot right there. And to be honest, I'm not against trails or, or having access, but from a homeowner standpoint, doing that to me and, and my family, will, you know dang well, that's going to cause me loss of value of my residence. I don't think, I don't think that's fair. So, for me, I have way more than the developer invested, because I've been here. I know, you know, the developer talked about after the plant, you know, we, we talked to him, and said he was wanting to put the trail up here, and that it was the city that wanted this to go right, right along that. And I know the Duttons, Bill and Brenda Dutton, who are not here, they are great people, who live right there. I mean, it's, it's right in the Brownings, the Duttons, the Cluffs, like backyard from their home, like, we're talking 20 feet from their house. And so, I don't think the screening or, I just don't think it was thought through. And where this is a new development, I don't understand why it couldn't be thought to run it through the new development. I, I just don't understand that, other than it would probably cause loss of buildable I just think approving this request will create a mismatch, neighborhood fabric, for the sake of accommodating a denser plan. And the P R U D will be managed, will be an H O A-managed community, which is not consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods that are traditional, single-family zones without H O A requirements. It just, this doesn't match anything around us, and I think that's the issue. I think everybody intended for this to be developed similarly to what 3025 North was, our, our development. I do think the, the public street through this development does not align with the existing stubbed road on 20, I mean, it, we have sidewalks on both sides of the stub, but now we're only gonna have them on one side of the public street going through. I just don't think it matches. Hobbs Creek Drive, it's not a quiet local road. It's a collector road that handles traffic from the Oak Forest neighborhood, and becomes a relief route if Highway 89 has backups or shuts down. It all comes right through there. So, yet the development plan doesn't include any road widening for Hobbs Creek, or lane improvements such as a middle two-way left-turn lane, for when that happens. And at times, there is a lot of traffic on that road. The developer themselves acknowledged that, you know, he could do something different, or he could do a better option. I, I don't know if that's the case or a selling point. But, you know, he said, in the planning commission meeting, he could get 40-plus lots or whatever on this. I, I question that with the slope, but it would require regrading the site and removing all the trees. I thought about this, and, you know, I, as long as it follows the same zoning as us, I don't know if I would object to that. I mean, it would reduce the wildfire risk by eliminating the urban wildfire interface, which, after the L.A. fires and having to watch that, yeah, it's on all of our minds. It would allow a clean trail connection to connect through the new development homes, rather than wrapping it around the existing ones. And it would enable possibly getting a public trailhead at the bottom of the development, similar to the one west of this location. You know, if we're going to develop this land, I just wanna make sure we do it right and responsibly, under the intended zoning, and not by shoehorning a P R U D that I just think doesn't fit. So, this isn't about being anti-development, this is about being pro-responsible development. And I'm just asking you to protect the integrity of Layton City's general plan, historically. I know there's been many other home builders, like Ivory Homes, come and looked at this site, they've done everything, they walked away, out of concerns. So, you know, I would ask that we respect the sensitive geological risks of this land, and stand with the people who are already here and invested. This proposed P R U D, I believe, does not meet that standard. I believe we can do better, and you have the authority to vote against this rezone, and I would urge you to. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. Okay, I take it that, Mr. Anderson, you spoke on behalf of several of your neighbors there, so I would ask that if anybody else has additional items they'd like to speak to, you're welcome to take the mic, otherwise, I think you did a, a pretty good job covering all the issues there. Please state your name.
My name is Daniela Harding, 1506 East, 2050 North. There's a sensitive lands issue, so of course I'm here. I love me a good sensitive lands issue. Just for some of these residents, I know some of these residents I don't know. I lived in, I lived near this area, and I was a planning commissioner in 2015. I was heavily involved in the East Ridge rezone. And I will say that that process took us seven years. So, when this developer is saying that it's been two years of back and forth, while I empathize and sympathize with him, it took a long time to get East Ridge to the point that it's at now. And, so, when we're talking about sensitive lands, I would ask that this council take a moment and sincerely consider tabling this tonight. I will tell you, back in 2015, there was a project I was involved with as a planning commissioner, and that was Fiddler's Creek, and it came to the, it came to the commission, it was just the wrong type of project for the piece of land that it was on. And the developer, and the citizens, and the city all got together, and we came out with a much better plan. I really feel like there hasn't been communication with these citizens that are going to be living around this. And, so, when we're looking at all of this density in the 30% grade, and I have so many questions myself, are there, are there French drains in this? Are the residents going to be allowed to see the geotech reports? I know in the past, the city hasn't been forthcoming when it comes to looking at geotech reports and things like that. So, at this point, I understand your role as, as members of the city council. I understand private property rights, but I understand that there's a lot of confusion, and given the history that we have, and I'll, I'll end on this note, given the history that we have, especially in our area, we have had six homes fall since 2000. And, I will say, down by me, right now, I live off of 1450 East, Hidden Hollow Drive in that area, and back in the 80s, there was a piece of land just like this, and there was a proposal to build the Hidden Hollow condominiums, and they didn't do it. And I am so glad as a resident that they didn't do it, because there is a home just to the south of that, that is now sitting there completely condemned, because the hillside has come down. Hill stability is a big issue, and there's, you cannot guarantee that you can keep water off this property, you can do all the mitigation that you want, but there's just too many question marks still. So, I would strongly encourage the council just to table this, and get everybody, including the citizens, at the table to talk more about this. Thank you.
Okay.
I beat ya.
Thank you, you guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Ted Lewis, I live on 3025 North. I own that property that is to the south of the Heritage Crest subdivision. That's the subdivision on 3025 North. This piece of ground that they're trying to develop is on the north side of that same subdivision. Over the last year and a half, I've gone through city staff, trying to subdivide that eight and a half acres on the south side into a two-acre lot. It was unsuccessful, apparently I couldn't meet all of the ordinances, but I did understand, and I do understand, all of the sensitive land requirements. First of all, I just wonder about the trail usage and the easements associated with that, if, if the staff has actually meeting the requirements of the easements for that, because the, I know in the sensitive land requirements, the easements were devastating to get into this piece of property of mine. So, I'm wondering, if they're trying to put the trail down that south side of this piece of property, how are they not going to devastate that to meet the requirements of their easements? They were requiring me to get a 26-foot-wide road down into that road, that property of mine, on that side, which would have gutted the property. I went through the exercise of doing a geological study, I went through the, the exercise of getting into geotech, the whole thing. I'm assuming that map or picture that Mr. Anderson gave you was that landslide? Is that right, Justin? That landslide was on my property, that happened after the fact of all of that. Again, there was no construction activity going on, there was no water leaks. This was during the winter, that heavy water winter. If you look at the maps, even just, geol, look up on Google Maps, and you look at that L-1.1 area on that, I'm pretty familiar with this area, just in the fact that I've been in- And I'm familiar with that ground pretty intimately. Again, if you look in, on, on Google Maps in that L1.1 area, there's a slough in there, a big slough already. And I'm telling you, I don't know where they did their boreholes for their geological study on this, but I would caution this council to approve this without further investigation on some of this. I echo the concern about, or the usage of PRD use. I don't think it, I think it should be an exception and not a rule. And again, I echo what Mr. Anderson says. I know that when we originally did this development for Heritage Crest and we put that stub road in there in preparation for a future development, it was not for lower-end housing. I don't know how, what else you would call this because I don't think the standards, what I saw on, on those elevations for those drawings were not the same standards of our homes. Heritage Crest has already taken a hit for our home values because of the development, development of 89. I know this council had nothing specifically to do with the requirements for UDOT and giving us the sound wall, but because of the, the new noise associated with 89, our, I know that our values of our homes have gone down. If this development of higher-density, lower-value homes gets approved, I think we're going to take another hit. And I, like Justin says, I don't think it meets the value of what the master plan was intended to be for this city. I appreciate your time in this and I hope you make good considerations in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Stow. I live on 3025 North. Prior to living on 3025 North, I lived on Sunset Drive. And why, I just want to bring up one issue and that is what's been talked about a little bit, maybe too much, but the geological, technical issues. And I appreciate a couple of council individuals having concerns. I'm concerned about the homes on the, on the edge because we bought a house, we moved to Leighton from Salt Lake and we're very grateful. We love Leighton. I've been here for 25 years. Back in the 1990s, we bought the last home that was built on Sunset Drive on the north side. View lot, beautiful view lot. We loved it. We ended up selling the home and moving further up on Sunset Drive. Two years later, we had snow event. There was absolutely no hose that I left on during that seven years that we lived there. But two years after we sold it, the homeowner that we sold it to, a scarp manifested itself. It was, the city knew about it for decades and allowed those homes to be built there. And the scarp went right through our neighbor's backyard and actually damaged their foundation. The house was condemned. And if you notice, there's now the park entrance was built there because the house was removed. I knew the Courtinglys very well, the ones that lost their home. They lost everything. Could they sue the city? No. Could they sue the developer? No. He'll walk away free saying he's liable. Courtinglys lost everything on that house. So, here we were, two years later, and our buyer that we sold the house to sues us. Said that we committed fraud because we knew all about this. We knew nothing about this. Innocent home buyers, we didn't, didn't know that this was all there. And so, to make a long story short, we got sued. We literally lost tens of thousands of dollars that I had to pay out of pocket to defend ourselves. And the point of the matter is he tried to get from the city, tried to get all seven homes that were actually victimized by the scarp. And, and they wouldn't, they wanted to do, he wanted to do a class action lawsuit and they didn't want to do it. And, because they knew it costs so much to try to sue the city. But the point of the matter is, the developer followed the city's guidelines for the geotechnical issues. The home builder that we bought the home from, that's why the buyer was suing us because he couldn't get to the developer, he couldn't get to the builder because we had sold the home to him. So, he's trying to go through us to be able to get to the buyer, or excuse me, the builder. And so, it was a three, three-way lawsuit because we had to bring the builder in. But the developer walked free, free and clear. So, between us and the builder, we had to pay to defend ourselves. And my point of the matter is, I'm concerned about the homeowners on those seven to eight lots on the outside, that they're going to be like us. Or worse yet, they're going to be walking away from a house that is partially condemned and we turn into a skeleton ugly subdivision that is sitting there that is, has homes that are not livable in. So, that's my concern. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Claudette Mathie. I do not live in Leighton. I live in Stansbury. But my family is the one selling this property. I have grown up on this property. When my grandfather bought it back in the 1950s, there was nothing around it. It was zoned for agricultural only. He raised these goats out there. He had a beautiful garden. It was absolutely gorgeous property and he loved the fact that he could look out and see that reservoir down below. Loved it. There was so much brush, there was many times he asked my dad and my brother to take a horse and go down and try to get a little bit of the vegetation out and stop his, the deer from coming up and eating his garden. Basically, bow and arrow hunt them. But he still loved to have them on his property. When he passed away and he left it to his children, they were faced with the fact that the reservoir was now, can have a trail around it, everything else. The vegetation that I remember growing up has already been taken out. Not once in all those years that we have been there has the ground slid, has it trenched, nothing, because it had that natural vegetation there. The developer, as you see, has gone through and done his, all of his studies and he's developed ways to stop that possibly from sliding down the hill. Has anybody taken into consideration how far back those properties are going to be built from that actual slope of the ground? I went and walked that trail when the family decided to put it on the market. This has not been a two-year project of trying to get this developed. This has been a seven-year project in trying to get somebody to be able to come up with a concept that they could develop this beautiful property and keep its, and maintain it for the natural beauty that it is. I walked that trail and I saw the houses that all these people have built along the side of it and they're all on that edge. They were all approved to build on an ledge. That was their choice. And now, this property is being traumatized over it all and being held accountable for that when that's not what the developer's choice is doing. I don't see where he's going to build right on the edge of that 30% slope. He's taking that all into consideration and building it back far enough that you're not going to have that slope slide. But if the natural vegetation is allowed to grow back, that also creates a barrier for it to slide down in there. But with the trail down there, that vegetation's not going to come back. And everybody's concerned about the trail going through the property, whether it's rezoned for PRUD or left the way it is. That trail's going through there. That's between the city, parks and recreation, and the development in able to sell this property and let it be developed, but still maintain the beauty that has been there for well over long, 50 years, longer than any of us have ever lived there. My grandfather lived there. He bought it. He didn't want neighbors. And everybody, I'm sure he would, he was screaming and hollering when they wanted to develop around him. But he still let it go through because he knew that that's what has to be done. There is change. You made the comment, Mayor, about the financial education. You want growth. This is growth. You complain about the traffic going on Hobbs Creek. I remember visiting this property. It was still Highway 89. There was no turn lane. You pulled off that right onto the property. I've watched it develop. I've watched it grow. I've watched 89 be done over, I don't know how many times. And it's going to continue because we are growing. And that's all this is. The concept of the house might be a little bit different, but the value is still there because of the location. I'm asking you guys to approve this. It's taken a long time to get here and it's not going to deter anything from Leighton City. It's actually going to beautify it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for being here. I know this is a lot, a lot of time and effort on, on everybody's part. My name is John Hill. I live on 3025 as well. And one of the things that I, I'm in a highly regulated industry and so I understand about regulation. And one of the things that I, I coach and lead my people regarding is what's in the best interest of all parties. Okay? So, there's a variety of parties here. There's, there's the, the landowner, totally supportive of their desire to sell the land and do what they need to do with the proceeds. Totally supportive of having new neighbors. I've only been in a neighborhood five years and everybody's welcomed me. It'd be great to have some additional neighbors. The developer, they want to make a profit, right? What's in their, and they're trying to do what's in their best interest. The, the city, the parks and recreation group, everybody wants to do what's in their best interest. However, I don't know that it's all, making a rezoning decision based on a trailhead and getting it in for the least amount of possible and the lowest cost to the city at the cost of other residents may not always be the best decision long-term. I live on the corner of 3025. My house is dealing with geotechnical issues because of, not because of hoses, but because of improper mitigation that happened long ago, 30 years ago when the, when Heritage Crest was approved. Originally, it was designed to only have 20 lots, 19 lots. My lot was the 20th lot and it was not, they, at that time, it was discouraged that that lot should have been built on because of the, the geotechnical issues that still was approved. And I'm now responsible for it. I can't sue the city. I've been in, I was, I was with the, in a mediation meeting with the city and I've tried to sue them, but they're not liable, is their, their claim right now. Those geotechnical issues are due to the settlement and water issues and the vibration from Highway 89. Was Highway 89's vibration considered in the geotechnical? I don't know. That's something that needs to be considered because my house continues, continues to settle even though I have helical piers on my house. And my house has a 33% slope, not a 10% or 5% or 30% slope. So, there's, there, this is an active geological situation. It's not hypothetical. And the developer is not responsible. What the state law requires that, once, once the, the developer's only liable to the, the first homeowner. If that homeowner sells that property, the developer's no longer liable. And so, therefore, who holds, who has the liability? The homeowner. And so, the, the unrepresented parties here are those future potential homeowners. And there's a lot of, I'm spending, I spent over $100,000 just on helical piers and I have still more to do. And I'm, I have thousands, tens of thousands of dollars in lawsuits against UDOT because of the poor situation. So, this is not hypothetical. I'm living the nightmare that those residents could potentially face. And does anybody have the control over the biggest hose in the world? Mother Nature? Nobody does. And so, it's not about a hose left on. I haven't watered my property for three years because of all these issues and I still continue to experience settlement. This is, this is a reality. This is not hypothetical. I'm bearing the, the cost of this. I don't want to see these other homeowners deal with it. I'm, if we can, I'm all for development and I hope the Stole family can develop the property, but as outlined and rezoned, it's not, it's not a responsible thing. We as stewards, or you as stewards of, of this city at this time have a responsibility to make sure that you're looking not only for the current situation, the, the landowner, the developer, the residents, the future owners as well. I think, I think it needs to be tabled and more consideration needs to be done to actually mitigate the, address the concerns that everybody has. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a lot of the points that I was going to address have already been, so I will cut mine short. But that picture that you've seen of the slide is directly behind my house. I just woke up one morning, opened my window and...
Do you want to mention your name, please?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Chris Sodakirk. I live at 2752 East 3025 North. The one, the other picture that I wanted to show you is the, this is the stub. This is the, the stub that the city planned. And so, when we moved into this neighborhood, we knew that it was going to be developed. And I got to tell you, I'm excited. I love the thought of more and new neighbors. But I've looked up the provisions for what a PRUD should have to have. And under the municipal code, the approval of a conceptual PRD plan shall require the following findings. And there's a bunch, but the one that I want to address is, the proposed development creates no detriment to the adjacent property nor to the general area in which it is located. And that it will be in substantial harmony with the character of the existing development in that area. The character of this street is a street with two sidewalks and a sidewalk on each side. There is no, from what I can tell, any sidewalks or anywhere to walk unless you're going to walk in the road. I just want to bring up one other point that's a small fear of mine. We love Halloween. We have maybe four children that live on our street, but every year, how many trick-or-treaters?
200.
Seriously, between 200 trick-or-treaters. And their parents drive them all over and then they park and the little kids walk on our sidewalks and trick-or-treat. If you develop this, they're going to continue on and they're going to be walking in these roads without the protection of a sidewalk. And that just worries me and I think it's not safe. And so, I would hope that we don't pass this rezoning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Cody Logi. I live at 2743 East 3025 North. So, I'm just right at the end of the cul-de-sac. And, you know, first off, I just want to say, I, you know, I really want this land to be sold for Sonny and Janine and Carolyn. They have been working on this for a long time. They're sweet people. They've been working with us. We have a huge ditch behind our, our yard. Madam Mayor, I know you went and visited that and looked at that wide open. I've been working with Mr. Steve Jackson back here trying to get that filled. And what's causing that is the whole subdivision flows to the side of our house and it was never properly vetted or piped to Hobbs Reservoir. So, behind our house is, we call it the Grand Canyon. There's a huge, huge ditch down there and it certainly has us concerned. Some of the trees are leaning in that one direction and we are, we are concerned with this development adding more water to a situation where we're trying to get Leighton City to fix that. And they, Mr. Jackson assured me that the plan is in, in the works. It's just part of, part of this development to get them access to fix that pipe and fill out that dirt in. I want this property to be sold for Janine and these guys. They, they've been waiting a long time. I just want it done properly. I just want the constant flow with our subdivision. I don't want to change. We've got a road. I just keep everything consistent. I want walkable sidewalks. I want a neighborhood... I want a neighborhood that I don't feel restricted, that doesn't have an HOA, that we can all go in and we can be neighbors. That's what it's about, right? And I want a neighborhood that's consistent with the existing neighborhood, not something that's new. That's my, that's my point and my wife. But everybody else has been spoken on the same issues. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jeff Hart. I live at 2842 East 3025 North. And I, I won't go over everything so we don't have to hear all that again. I appreciate your time and everything. One thing I did want to bring up is the developer said he will control the water with this. But the HOA is going to control the water, and HOAs have different people all the time managing them, voted by the community. It also doesn't stop someone from leaving their hose bib on that's on their house for their little garden that they put out there, so just to bring that up. But I want, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. The stub road off of ours and the road going through there is a city road that accesses us so people can come in and out, but everything else is private and able to be controlled by the HOA. The trail comes up through there. All the people that are going to be on the trail are going to try to use those amenities, but yet those amenities, pickleball courts, all that stuff, gazebos, is going to be only for those people. And how's the HOA going to mitigate that? And by rezoning it to a PRUD, it almost seems like to me you're separating the two communities. That's private, almost like, all their amenities and everything are there, but yet the roads going through there dump right into us. But yet they can control everything else that's in there. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up on top of what everything was said. But I do, I know it's a sensitive issue. I feel for the homeowners. I put myself, the property owners, I put myself in their position. I'd be doing exactly what they're doing. Any of us would be trying to get, sell your property. I mean, that's what it is. But I think we've got to look at the rezoning, especially the PRUD and the other things. Even the traffic issue, you know, can, can be an issue. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you consider that greatly.
Thank you. And thank you for not repeating.
Hi. I'm Carla Barton, and I live on.
Speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry. 3025 North. The road that's going to be going into this new subdivision, not on Hobbs Creek, is straight across from my house. And so I just kind of wanted to follow up on what these others have said about, we're really worried about the traffic. For one thing, just our little 18 houses trying to get onto Highway 193, if we ever want to turn left, which we do, that go into Leighton, I mean, I'm surprised we're still here, half of us. I've lived on the road for 21 years. My husband just passed away a little over a year ago. And I love this house, this street, and if I have to die there, I will. But I wanted something littler for me to take care of. I put my house up last October, or September or something. And the main reason that I cannot sell my house is because of highway, I know that's UDOT, but the noise from Highway 89, it's not Highway 89, it's a freeway. I mean, we have those big trucks that are using those kinds of brakes and everything, and that is the reason. And at first, I thought, oh, it's not that noisy, you know? I guess I got used to it or whatever. But it is now, within the last year. I stand out there, and I think, oh, my gosh. You hear the motorcycles, and it's kind of a, you come up over 89, and then you go down a little, and it just bounces off at the other side of the highway. And when you're coming up Hobbs Creek from 193 and going to try to turn in the other opening, we're going to have so many wrecks right there. Because right now, with nobody on there, you know, if it's one person and you're, you know, putting on the brakes or whatever, it's only 30 miles an hour, I think. None of you go that speed. But anyway. So I just wanted to put that out there, that literally, I cannot, that is the reason that people have said they want to buy my house. So, help.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Hi. I'm Wendy Jensen. This is way past my bedtime. I do not live on 3025, but I just want to add my concerns, especially with the path of trail that's down there. I don't know if you've ever walked it. I walk it all of the time. I love it. It is a very, very, very busy trail, especially Sundays when it's gorgeous and sunny. And having that parking lot and huge access is going to just add, and again, to double, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, the guy with the cute dogs that I always walk by your house. Yes. You know, it is, it separates it. We have now this private property with this public property, where you've, you're going to have people that are walking there, and they're going to want to use that. So sorry if I don't make sense. It's way past my bedtime.
My name is Beverly Lotito. I live on 3025. Thank you all for staying up so late for us. I want to know if you know why we were missed with the sound wall on that side, right? I mean, it stops up by, well, you know where it stops. You've probably driven by there 100 times, too. And another question is, if perchance this happens and the trail does come up, that leaves our properties along that north side of the street all open to people cutting through our yards, shutting, shutting their walk off two minutes early or whatever. Is there any plan for a sound wall there or a privacy wall there to keep our properties private? Which right now, God made them private. There's nothing back there. So, anyway, thank you all for staying here for us.
I'll try to be brief. I always speak in favor of housing. We have a housing crisis in Utah for a lot of reasons. But the number one is, nobody wants anything in nearby to change. And we're not going to, we're not going to get out of this by refusing to change. I'm an engineer, electrical by trade. I don't know anything about dirt, but slopes concern me. I understand physics. So absolutely, there should be no compromising on safety. This has to be done right. If I could wave my magic wand and make a new, you know, law in Utah, it would be that every new home developed would have a 10-year geotechnical insurance policy prepaid by the developer before the house is sold, before it's permitted. Because as has been mentioned, the experts don't always get it right. The city has their codes. The developer has done very good diligence to comply with those codes. We don't know if those codes are right. But I'll tell you what, if Allstate or State Farm or Farmers Insurance had to write a policy for 10 years on these properties, they're going to make sure that soil's compacted before they let anyone build on it. But I don't have a magic wand to do that. To me, the proper way to put two dozen homes on this property would be to put, put them in five-story, or five, five-unit, three-story townhomes, and put them all against that southeast corner so you're as far away from that edge as you can. Doesn't match the neighborhood character, even less so than this. You can make it an R1, M1 or an RM2 and get 27, maybe 30 units on there, much more safely than spreading them all out like this. But it wouldn't comply with the neighborhood. But change is how we make things work. Someone had mentioned whether these were going to be low-rant houses. I don't think there's any 3,000-foot, square-foot low-rant houses overlooking Hobbs Creek Reservoir. So that's, this is, this is not a low-income housing project by any means, for sure. And that's, that's about all I have to say on it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think this pretty much wraps up our public hearing portion. If there's, if the developer would like to come back up and maybe address a couple of these issues, but certainly, you know, don't.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be really quick. Just a couple of things on the water that came up about the, where the water is going from the stormwater. The whole ground saturating at one point from natural, that's natural, that's what's been going on for well before we've ever been here, and so that's what we want to try to encourage. So we looked at low-impact development, doing storm tech devices. What we were told to do is don't do that. Let the, from the hardscape roads, rooftops where they can, driveways, that'll go out through a storm drain and empty down at the bottom on Hobbs Creek Trail down below. Everything else, they want to infiltrate naturally through the, through the ground. That's why they don't want lawn holding moisture, if you will. So that's kind of where the water would, would go, the stormwater. As far as product types, this, our architect designed this around some, an area in California and Balboa Beach. I don't know if you're familiar with that. These houses are not cheap, and so probably some of the most expensive real estate in the country. And so these, these pads are 50 by 50. So if you look at that, three stories at 2,500 square feet, these can be as much as 7,000 square foot homes. This is not cheap product. And so what I'm telling you is, if you think this is low income, this is not low income, even though there's some attached, it's still single-family. These are big homes. The intent of this was to attract active lifestyle, low maintenance. I like to get out in Utah. I like to go look at things. I don't want to come home mowing my lawn. And that's kind of the type of person we see doing that, probably empty nesters, young professionals. And so I don't see that this is necessarily marketed towards a low income. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. So outside of that, that's, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Council, I'll bring it back to you. Do you have any, any other questions or concerns?
I know myself, I did have one question that would really be probably for the staff. And only because it was brought up here, but I am quest, I am concerned about the public street. Pretty much all of our public streets do have sidewalks on both sides, so how are we able to get away with just on one side in this case?
This is a hillside standard, which is allowed within our code. And so there, there are actually a fair amount of our hillside subdivisions that are built this way.
Okay. That's a fair answer. Okay. Anyone else?
Weston, can you talk about some of the setbacks from the buildable space to where the slope drops off on some of those border homes? Border homes? Edge homes?
Yeah. So hopefully, we can identify it on this map, but this, this border that wraps around, that is the build line. So, I mean, so it wraps around the entire project. You can see it kind of outlined here. And so there are some homes that are, that are closer to those lines, but that, that is the build-to line. So that's as far as they can go. These homes would be surveyed in, and so this is exactly the spot they would go into. And then beyond that, there would be no further building. Hopefully, that addresses your question.
Sorry, those ones that are close, is it like zero to where the foundation could be, or?
Let me take a closer look. It does look like a couple of those patio, those, those pads touch that line. So there's a couple of them that are right, right on the edge there. And that's not to say they're right on the edge of the slope, they're on the edge of that start of that 30%.
The buildable area?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing that there's none, let's go ahead and bring it back to Council for action. Council, whenever you make the recommendation here, could you please close the public hearing? Unless you're considering tabling it. Sure. Ask the question.
Clint, now on, as has been discussed, and this has obviously been a very robust public comment, which we appreciate, and I appreciate the developer, because there's a lot of investment in this, and I appreciate the representative of the family as well, because we have to represent, you know, respect the, the property rights of the current landowner. And so these are all things that, why this is oftentimes difficult decisions that we make. So I guess I just would like maybe some clarification, Clint. So a denial of a rezone would require the developer to wait a year to bring the same issue back again? The same issue in the same zone, right? So they could bring some.
Correct. Bring a new application, yeah.
And inside, inside the land use and our general plan, there's not a general plan amendment being made. It's simply just a rezone, which is clearly just a legislative decision, which has no administrative capacity. It's just legislative. It could be like, I don't like the look of that house. I'm not saying that's what I'm doing. I'm just, it's a hypothetical.
Yeah. The standard is reasonably debatable.
Okay.
So in other words, there can be many reasons on both sides. It just has to be something that is reasonable and can, a reasonable person would agree with.
Okay. Thank you.
May I?
Go ahead. Sure.
Just a, just a thought, and I don't know if other council members or what they're thinking or not thinking, but as I've listened to all of you, thank you for being here. Thanks for staying up late. It's a tough, it's a tough spot that we're all in, and as we weigh all of the different parties, we've, I guess I'll just speak for myself, we have a body of laws. We've, we've worked on this. We've, I mentioned before, the city, the councils and planning commissions to try to come up with a body of law that would pertain to sensitive lands. And I think the message that I'm hearing from you all is that, don't trust that, which is fine. I, and that's fine. It's, it's just, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to, when the experts are saying, this is, this is what we've done. We've gone through all this process. It's taken years. Here we are. We're following your rules, not our rules, your rules. And, and so I think, hopefully, some of the council members are thinking, like, okay, that's reasonably debatable. We don't want to deal with this, so we're going to deny it. That's not, we shouldn't be thinking that either. So tabling it, we're going to have another discussion similar to this. So I don't know where you go, where we go next if we don't, you know, want following our, our ordinance.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the one, the one question that I had that wasn't addressed, I don't know if it was just casually forgotten or what. I mean, there's been a lot of talk tonight. My daughter is asleep, so I get it. But understanding that this has taken a lot of time and a lot of money, I still have the question about the, the absolute need for those homes on the end, on the edge, and wondering from the developer if there is any room for, you know, those lots in the back there from 107, 108, 109, 110, 117, 118, because those, to me, are the ones that are questionable, at least in my mind, as it relates. at least in my mind, as it relates to sliding, no matter if you're at the 0 percent, or if you're at the, you know, whatever the, whatever the percent is away from the buildable positioning. And I think the main reason that that is still in my mind is not because of questioning the geotechnical studies or any of those things, but just understanding historically, not just here, because Leighton's not the only city that has had slides after studies have been done, but just understanding that life happens, and if there's anything that can be done to mitigate that, it would seem to me that not having those homes there and letting that be whatever the landscaping, the xeriscaping is, would be an actual mitigation plan, because you're not having to build into that space. So, that's still something that's, that's on my mind. Again, I'm not an expert in any of these things, but I'm just looking at those homes on the back edge of this, of this land, and I did go visit the area as well. I didn't notify anyone, so I wasn't able to walk on all of, you know, the property, but I was up there as well. I grew up in this area. My bus route was through this area as a kid, so that's, that's what's on the top of my mind right now, agreeing with the need for housing, the need for developable properties. I think I read somewhere, I don't know if it was in our packet, or if it was in the planning commission notes, but I did read that I believe these homes were going to be going for like, what, 1.2 million or something like that? Like, they weren't going to be cheap homes. So, I, I second the comment about this not being a low-income development at all. And so, to have the, the preparation, the planning in such a high-end development, and then the future residents who will be spending that type of money on this type of home, just, that's where I'm thinking, is just that back row. Is there any possibility with doing something in that space with those, those homes in the back of this, this picture here? So, that's, that's what I'm thinking about.
Any other questions here? If not, I will allow the developer to possibly address this, because that is technically a developer question. I think the way you look at this, in my opinion, and certainly everybody has their own opinion, it looks like there'd only be two homes that really come into play there, or two properties.
No, that, that's a great question.
That touch the border, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, address, address Councilman Smith Edmonds.
And that's a great question, and I think you might look at that and say it might be better just to remove some of the density, but if you look, and as we laid this out, working with the geotechnical engineers, we've almost created a wall along the western side, and that's where they all interconnect to some degree. They're not connected directly, but they do create a level of support, because we're going down into native soil to keep that slope in place. The best thing to do, I think townhomes were brought up, that's what they told us to do, is do a big, long thing of townhomes, that would keep everything from sliding off. That's the best approach. But taking away product actually has a reverse effect, because you have more slope that's available to slide, and that'll be concentrated in that one area that's not retained by any kind of foundations, or around that perimeter to the east where that buildable line is drawn, will be that engineered rockery wall that has geofiber in it too, and textile engineered to hold that slope up as well. So, we have the foundation walls, which are an engineered element, as well as the rockery wall, and then again, we already talked about the surface water, but those do have an integral part in holding that whole community in one, if you will, so. And, and again, those pads are exactly where those homes are going to be. We're not moving them one and a half feet to the east or vice versa, so that's, they're designed and engineered to be exactly where they're at. So, it does have a negative impact by removing some of the product, honestly. It's been designed and engineered this way, and so that's part of the, the process, but anyway, to your point.
So, maybe for clarification then, on the map up here, the dotted dash lines, is that your retaining walls that you're talking or referencing here?
The dotted dash line would be the storm. That's storm drain? The two of them together, going from?
Yeah, that's true. Comes out of each one of the circles.
From the cul-de-sac down?
Yeah.
To the west?
Yeah. Okay. So, where are the retaining walls going? I think that's what, what's hard to depict here.
It is kind of hard to see from that, Madam Mayor, but it's kind of, I don't see you can see it really good. It might be on the grading plans, probably a little easier to see on that.
Do you have those? Yeah, we don't have that available for us, but, okay.
But it mainly goes along, I think it's 117, and I apologize, I can't really see really well, but 109, 110, 108, 117, 118.
So, on the, that would be the west side of the property?
Correct, correct. And then further down, it would step down onto the trail, would have retaining on the west side of the trail there too, as it comes around on the public trail. And then it comes underneath a, goes over the top of a culvert, so those trails don't interconnect, and so the public trail is completely separate of the private trail.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Does that help? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So, while the council is deliberate determining what their next course of action here is, I do want to say thank you. Thank you for staying up so late, and I think you can see the sincerity of this governing body on how they really want to take all these matters and hear your opinion, because it, it's a tough decision, and there's a no-win situation, meaning that you can satisfy half of the people, but you dissatisfy the other half. So, just please understand that, that these guys are doing their best job here, and again, I want to say thank you for staying so late, but at the same time, acknowledge the fact that we were willing to adjust our schedule so that we could accommodate this type of input as well. So, again, thank you. Meanwhile, I'll see if any of the council members would like to take action here. And just as a reminder, we need to close the public hearing, depending on your action.
Sorry, I'm going to ask another question, but I don't know who it's to.
That's okay.
And historically, in sensitive lands like this, where there's a geotech study, has the council ever been addressed by the engineer that did the study? Because I'm, I'll, I'll say I'm close on this, because I think, I believe a lot of work has gone into it. I, I respect all the concerns that have been brought up. I, I respect the, the desires of the landowners, the developer, I think, I, I believe a lot of work's gone into it, but, but I still have some of the same concerns that Bettina mentioned, but I'm not an engineer, so just curious if that's a possibility, or if it's ever happened.
We've had a number of sensitive lands since I've been here in the last 10 years. I can't think of one where that's happened. That doesn't mean you can't request that. That's something that we could, we could facilitate if that was the request of the council.
With that being said, I, a couple of comments first, I guess. I, maybe it's an unpopular opinion with the residents, and I, I understand that, but I, I believe this is a suitable place and use for the PRUD, because it is a unique property. It's, it's trying to preserve some sensitive lands. But as I, as I said, I'm, I'm close, but I'm not quite there to voting for it. I'd, I'd probably support if the council went for it, to hold on to this and maybe request a conversation with a, a geotech engineer that worked on this, maybe in a work meeting even. It's a thought to the council.
Okay.
I'd be supportive of getting information from the geotechnical engineer and being able to speak to, you know, who the experts are about the concerns that have been brought up by the residents, as well as those that we have, and being able to cite, you know, examples of what we've seen in the past, and having that expertise to give us information. And also, if there are other things that have come up, I'm really thoughtful about Mr., Mr. Hill's comments, you know, with the extra lot being built and then not being able to get resolution, you know, after studies were done. And so, I would, I would definitely support that. Not sure how to make that motion, because I don't know if I would want that to, I understand the purpose maybe of it being in a work meeting, but for discussion purposes and maybe for the benefit of the public, not sure if work meeting or public would be, or council meeting would be more appropriate.
Sorry, just?
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, let me just.
Before we ask the legal advisor over there?
Oh, you're still here?
I'm here.
Oh, you just, just?
Fell asleep.
Table it and? Oh, yeah, this may be better.
So, maybe a comment, I've been here a few more years than Weston, and in the past, many years ago, we have had developers, as part of the development proposal, that have had their geotanical engineers come and speak to those issues. But since we, my recollection is since we went to a third party, the city hiring an independent third-party review, that, that has ceased. So, one of the things from staff, I'm not suggesting you should do it or not do it, but one of the clarifications that would be important for us to try to, if you want us to facilitate it, is which, I think the gentleman, Mr. Anderson, indicated that he's got IGS and CMT that's working on it, that are certified geotechnical engineers, we're familiar with. We have GeoStrata that is our third party, so I, I would assume you want to hear from the independent third-party person, but, and that's clarification if you want us to move forward with that. But typically, as I say, since we've had that kind of independent review, that's, we get a written, written copy of that, we, we haven't asked them to come and make those presentations, but we certainly, certainly could.
Okay, that's good.
Well, I like that. I think it'd be objective to have the, the other side, a second, like I said before, a second opinion. With that, if you're ready, Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and table this to a date uncertain, or what do we?
We could identify the first meeting in May.
It'd probably be better to try and identify the meeting, obviously subject to their schedule.
Right, exactly.
But with the preference of, of that date.
Say the first meeting in May.
I think that's fair, that gives them three weeks to respond.
Are we talking about hearing from the geotech?
Right.
Before we have that meeting?
Before we make, no, at that meeting to, to make a decision.
Oh, at that meeting, oh, okay.
Before a decision's made.
May 1st.
I, I would also just suggest that if there are any other outstanding issues that council wants staff to research or bring to, bring additional information, that would be good to include now, so that we can bring as much information as possible. It might, it might just be that, but just in case there's?
I personally would like to see the trail issue, see what the options are there, and, you know, like I said, the, I read the, our parks planners' concerns or suggestions, I guess, so I think that I'd like to see if that was, if that's a possibility or not. I know the developer said that he was willing to change that, but apparently it fell on our, on the staff's recommendation, so I guess I'd like that addressed. Any other?
Just before you make a motion, just for clarification, for me?
I already made a motion.
I'm the slow one here.
It's still hanging there.
It, we're? Hanging there.
Yeah, hang on.
I, I hear the both sides, and I don't hear anybody saying, "Don't build," okay? But they have little nu, no, I shouldn't say little, I apologize, but you have nuances that affect you either personally or as a group, you know, it just depends. And if we're going to hear from the geotech, it'd be nice, and I don't know how to do this, but if they could, you, you brought up, like, your house is surrounded, you know, and, and maybe we can address how we may mitigate that, maybe, or not, I don't know. And you talked about, there was another thing that I was, the, the big slough, the, oh, it was you, it was the Grand Canyon, and it sounds like they're doing some things, but yet it, it may not be solidified yet. And so, it'd be nice to be able to bring people together to just talk it, you know, you may be, it's going to come out the same thing, but yet be able to, you know, have a decent conversation, a meaningful conversation, not a, you know, accusation-type thing, but actually try to work something out. And, and I'm trying to think how, I don't know.
So, there's two different ways we could approach that. I mean, I'll, I'll make sure the legal counsel supports this or not, but we could do it one of two ways. We could not close the public hearing and turn around and have our geotech present to us at that time, as well as answer the additional question, and then close the public hearing and take action, or we could hold a separate meeting. So, I mean, I think that that's our two options there. I know that there is a motion on the table that has not been seconded, because I think witness warrants this discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're going to look for an amendment, but, or for it to be amended, but is that probably our two options there?
Yeah, either way is fine.
Yeah.
You've met the legal requirement of the public hearing, so either way is fine.
But I think to, to respond to Councilmember Thomas's concern about a dialogue, knowing that, I think what he's driving at here is it needs to be a three-way, possibly four-way conversation going on to make sure that we, we come to a consensus resolution, so that it's not any type of, I guess, angst amongst everybody. So, I think that's what he's driving at, but certainly we can have that discussion, even though we have a closed meeting, correct? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, not a closed meeting, excuse me, closing the public hearing.
Whether you close the public hearing or not, you always have the option to hear from the public, yeah?
Open it back up?
Yep.
Okay, that, that's the answer we needed. Okay, so, I'll turn it back over to Councilmember Roberts. Do you want to?
I just had a question about the motion.
Sorry.
So, let me just try to understand what, what we're asking. The third-party geotechnical engineer, engineers, the cities, and he's, he or she has already looked at this, and they've already made a recommendation, there's, that they're on board with it. Is that an incorrect statement?
Yeah, I think that's essentially correct. So, the, the purpose, from staff's perspective, the purpose of having the engineer come in would be to draw upon his expertise and help explain why he's, he's saying that this makes sense or meets the, meets the standard. It's not to negotiate?
Okay.
The four-way approval from staff's perspective.
We've all, we've all mentioned up here that we are not engineers, and then we're going to have the engineer come in here, and we're going to ask he or she questions about engineering, that we have no professional expertise to ask. So, I was just curious, what the, was the point just to get more information? Was, is that, is it a, something that you need to hear more about, so you can fully understand the concept? I, I just want to make sure I understand, and before I vote for the motion, what, what exactly we're trying to accomplish?
In my opinion, as I mentioned, I'm close to an approval, because I, you know, I think, I believe a lot of work has gone into it, I believe a lot of good work has gone into it, but I'd like to learn more of the information about those sensitive areas close to the slope. I'd like to learn more about water movement, and it's peace of mind for me before I make a big decision like this.
May I?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. My understanding is have the geotech firm, one who did the report for us, third-party come and just present what they did. I mean, it's not, nothing, nothing new, no negotiation, but this is what we did. And I think peace of mind's good, and I, and I-
I, and I think that's, the message I received from the residents at least, was, "We don't want anything to happen to these homes." Okay, well, we're going to have the engineer come, and who did our report. I, once again, we, these are our rules. These are our laws. So I'm okay with that.
Madam Mayor?
May I? Sure.
And for me, it's similarly, but also just being able to ask an expert. Right. So when we ask Weston, he's an expert in what he does, but he doesn't do the geotechnical piece. And so, while I appreciate the forthcoming, you know, and saying, "I don't know, I don't have that answer," I want to talk to the person who does. And so, you know, as the gentleman mentioned, there was no scarf on his property, according to a geotechnical study, but then there was. So asking questions like that, and to be able to understand, how does something like that show up later when it doesn't show up before? Like, none of us can answer those questions, but somebody who studies this should be able to. And that, personally for me, would, would be beneficial. You know, same with the fault line. You know, it clearly doesn't stop at the end of this property, but this is what they're showing us, because this is what's being reviewed. So, to ask additional questions, those types of questions are what, why I would want to talk to the geotechnical engineer.
Do you want to continue? Weston, you want to?
I may, Madam Mayor. Just one clarification. So, geotech, the geotechnical third-party, GeoStrata, they reviewed the geotechnical report. So they didn't, they didn't do the geotechnical report. The developer, his geotechnical engineers, they created the report. Ours reviewed it. So just clarification, as far as if we're bringing them, what they would be presenting, it would be their review of that. If that makes sense?
Yeah, they, they will review the other reports, and then express their professional, independent opinion about whether that meets the standard, and is, is a reasonable approach to the issue. So it's, it's essentially the same thing, but they don't go out and do their own report. They review the, it's a peer-review process.
That's a good point of clarification there. So, Count, do you want to proceed?
I'll make a new motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing, and.
May 1st.
Hold this.
Table.
Table this, all right. It is late. Table this item until May 1st, at our council meeting, requesting that our third-party geotech can attend that meeting, and help us out with some of these things, issues relating to building close to the slope, buildable area close to the slope, the, if the trail can be mitigated in a different way. And I'd like to learn about water runoff movement throughout the subdivision, and throughout, throughout the development, and in the sensitive area.
Very good. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been, I'm not going to repeat the motion, but it has been seconded, and so I will acknowledge that the public hearing is closed, and I'll bring it back to the council now for a vote to hear this issue again on our May 1st meeting. So with that, let me start down here with Councilmember Thomas. Yeah, that's you, tonight.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Bloxham?
Aye.
Okay, and Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, there you have it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was a long deliberation on a topic that I think we needed to hear. Before we leave, you guys are welcome to leave, but council, do you have any additional unfinished business? I failed to ask that last time, and I just want to make sure tonight, before we acknowledge, excuse me, we haven't, we haven't closed our meeting yet. Just a minute, please. We have not closed our meeting yet, so please understand this. So, council, do you have any unfinished business we need to address here? If not, then I'll look for a motion to close. All right, we've got something to meet it. Okay.
Right on.
I will now acknowledge this meeting has been closed. Again, appreciate everyone hanging out with us tonight till 11:33. Two records in a row, you're right.